What's up?
Go to the nearest. What's up?
The little white rabbit.
It's not on? Stay away from home. No, it's not the seat. No. It's two different things. It's fifty minutes. Fifty minutes.
On these.
It worked. We got a room. All right. No. Yeah. Last one star. This is like. You're twenty years. Please. Please stay. We would. I heard you. We should. We can. We give them that. You're already. And everybody. I'm used to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, we'll say this. Yeah. You have been in town. Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, what's this? That's something else. Maybe we know. Except for twenty.
What we know.
What? I mean, exactly. What's wrong? Maybe I should take what I was telling. Don't ask me no question.
They could.
Who's talking? Not I guess she told. And why? Y'all.
You get your chin.
All right.
You're all right now. You got it. If you hit. Yeah. Maybe you get it. He get your chest. He better get that chest.
Could we have that? I wouldn't stick. You down? Yeah. Morning.
I'll wait on the rest of.
Morning. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't. Don't worry about that. First of all, you need to watch though.
So what are you talking about? How bad do you feel? It's a mess.
What do you?
So just wait.
Yeah, talk.
And it already. That is. It already.
It's huge. It's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. The city council special meeting is now called to order. I'm going to ask Dr. Bill if he would come forward and provide us with the invocation. Everyone, please stand.
Thank you so much for the honor to be here and to lead us in prayer. I invite us to all bow our heads together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to come together. We thank you for these community leaders, city leaders, and each and every one who are here gathered for a very specific and special purpose. God, we pray for our city. We pray for peace here. We pray for a decrease in violence. We pray for all of our first responders. We pray for our police and our firefighters. We pray for our churches. We pray for downtown, God. We pray for your spirit to thrive here, and we pray for business to continue to thrive here, and we pray the community can continue to thrive here in powerful ways, in special ways, meaningful ways, to continue to drive and lead this, this, this part of Louisiana forward, God. And so we ask you to guide us. We're grateful for these leaders who are before us, for our mayor, for this wonderful city council, for all of our city officials and elected public servants. God, lead them, guide them, fill them through the power of your spirit. May you rest upon each of us during this time here in this place, right now. For I pray all of this in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please repeat the pledge. Our pledge of belief is.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, will you please call the roll? Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Brooks.
Here.
Councilman Tala Pharoah.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson. Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Bowman.
Present.
Mary Sano, welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am in a much better place than I was a week ago. So thank you very much. I appreciate the courtesies and all the well wishes from council members and members of the public. I am well and back.
Well, praise the Lord.
Amen. Amen.
The purpose of this meeting is to discuss what we've seen visually on social media and on the news, conversed in the community around Shreveport. And I think it's imperative that you all understand that the other purpose for this meeting is because we heard your concerns, your concerns as a community that crosses racial lines, that crosses if you're Democrat or Republican or independent. What we heard from you all was the concern, was the fear, was the anger, and what are the solutions? This is Shreveport, and what happens in Shreveport when we work as a collective body is that we get things done. And so we want to cancel out false narratives, but what we want to do is to ensure that we build a stronger Shreveport, Louisiana. And we cannot do that if we are divided. We hear your concerns. That's why we're here. We hear your concerns, not what people want to perpetuate, but also know that when you see what you saw this weekend, it causes you to lose a measure of hope. I am here. I live here. This council lives here. We have children here. We want you to have a safe Shreveport, and it doesn't matter that if you go out at ten o'clock, or it matters if you go out at eight o'clock AM, whatever time that you leave and go anywhere in Shreveport, you cannot have, we do not want you to have a fear of going anywhere in our city. And so what do we need to do? We need to see where we went wrong and correct it. We need to work together collectively to build. We have $110 million investment in downtown thus far that is going to trickle down to our neighboring communities. So what we're looking at today, so understand fully that we are here because of you, not because of lip service, not because we want to have a social media like, not because we're trying to aid and assist in somebody's radio post. It's because you had a fear, you had a concern, you cared, and you are here because you give a damn about Shreveport, Louisiana. And this is where we're looking and where we're going. So with that being said, I know that there will be comments, and there will be strong comments, and understand that we felt that. We felt all of that because we shared the anger, we shared the frustration, we did the yelling and the screaming that y'all couldn't hear. But we're here because we're going to come to a resolve, because we're going to change the narrative right now. Shreveport has national attention, not because of what you think because of that video. We have national attention because of Max Chambers, who is a teenager right now that is sitting before a national audience singing his, his law heart out, exercising his gift. And what do you think that those artists are going to do? They're going to Google Shreveport, Louisiana. So we have to decide what we want the narrative to be. So with that being said, at the beginning, I'm going to take, I'm going to ask any of our council members, do they have any opening remarks? Councilman Green.
Thank you. Madam Chair, and to all of you that's present, I'm here today with a broken heart when I see Shreveport, when I see our young people in the street, when I see them fighting as though they are enemies, when I see them running down the street, our young ladies that's almost naked, when I see all of the violence, when I see all of people kicking, knocking people out, and these are our children, these are people, I come with a broken heart. I don't have all the answers. Today, we have an agenda. I only have one answer as to our solution. All I know is what the Bible says to us. It says, "If my people who are called by my name would humble themselves and pray and seek his face and turn from our wicked ways," he said, "then will we hear from heaven he'll forgive our sins and heal our land." Yes, our land need healing, but the church has to come forth and do its job. We want everybody saved, but we want somebody else to do it. Money is not going to do it. It's going to take people. It's going to take people that love God, that love people. And so I'm here today with a broken heart, but I always know, one of my favorite songs is that trouble don't last always. It may endure for a night, but joy cometh in the morning. And so, Madam Chair and Mr. Mayor, I want, if it's possible, that after we finish here, whatever time, that you could instruct the police department to hold up traffic for about ten minutes at Marshall and Texas, that the people of God would stand, if they can fight in the street, certainly we can pray in the street.
Come on, come on.
That we would have a prayer. And Councilman Tala Pharoah, the Lord put you on my heart to ask you, ask Councilwoman Taylor, Pastor, ask you, and whoever else, because I believe in the power of prayer. My grandmama said prayer changes things, and not only that, but it changed people. And so today, whatever time we finish, Mr. Mayor, if you could allow the chief to just hold up traffic for about ten minutes, I just think, Mr. Mayor, and if you're well enough, I'd like for you to do a prayer. But I just think that after all is said today, the answer to whatever we are talking about is going to be through prayer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's, it's very disheartening to see what we all witnessed, and, you know, a lot of comments that I've seen and calls that I've had and Facebook posts and being tagged in Facebook is this is nothing new. You're right, it isn't. And it's been going on way too long. I will tell you that this council in particular, since we were elected in 2018, myself and Reverend Green were elected, we have really tried to make strides with the police department and with equipment and everything that we can do to try to help with this. Our real-time crime center is up and running. Is it up to par? Not quite yet, but just think about where we've come in the last two years under the mayor's direction and the council funding a lot of what's going on with the real-time crime center. But I agree with Councilman Green, there's got to be something that changes the hearts of these individuals that are doing this. I don't, we can spend as much money as we can, and it is our duty to provide as much safety downtown, but our officers are tired. They are, they are worn out. We're, I'm not going to give a number because I don't do that, but our officers were very, very low. They're extremely underpaid compared to other areas, and we've got to figure out a way to retain officers. Unfortunately, we don't have, you know, in a real world, and I talked to the chairwoman about this, you know, one of her ideas is to have officers walking up and down the streets, and I'd love to see that, but we just don't have the officers. These people are working, these officers, men and women of the Shreveport Police Department, are working hours and hours of mandatory, I wouldn't call it mandatory, but overtime, overtime, and these are the young officers who have children who are trying to go to, to ballet recitals and piano recitals and soccer and softball, and they're working eighty hours a week in a very tedious and, I mean, honestly, dangerous and not fun job. And so we've got to work together, number one, to try to promote like what Reverend Green just said, let's pray over the city. That's, that's one of the biggest things that we can do is pray. Community leaders need to get involved and give these young, these young kids that are doing this another way, instead of being so angry with each other and fighting, we need to work on conflict resolution to where we don't see things like this going on in our city. But first and foremost, we have to have the officers there to be able to stop the situation before it happens, and then when it does happen, to be able to prosecute these people and put them in jail where it doesn't continue to happen over and over again. And I am committed in this next year and two months, that Councilman Green and I will share, and then we're going to be at Morrison's on a regular basis, I think. But I am committed to doing whatever it takes to make Shreveport a safer place. And one comment that was made is, well, you're in southeast Shreveport, and I live twenty minutes from downtown. How does it impact me? I've told Mr. Glover this, I told Ms. Swain this when she was the DDA director. I feel like downtown is everybody's district because we have residents that work down here. This is our central business district, and we all should be representing downtown. And I will do whatever it takes, and we're going to come up with some ideas, but I want people to understand that this council, when it came, when it comes to issues on crime, we are, we are together. And I challenge anyone to look and call us dysfunctional because when it comes to crime... And I challenge anyone to look and call us dysfunctional, because when it comes to crime, we have voted together 100% of the time. And we will continue to do that. So I'm prayerful that this meeting will help. I'm prayerful that the prayers from the churches and the business owners and the homeowners and the club owners, that we can get this under control. Because if not, I've said it, and I really stand by this, Shreveport's dead if we don't get this situation under control. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's a woman, Bowman.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here today because I care. I'm here because we need a resolve. We need to figure out what we need to do. I'm here because I want the chief of police to know, I'm in full support of anything you need. Whatever help you need, let us know. If we need to call the sheriff's office to help, if we need to call whomever. I'm not opposed to anything, but right now, we do know if we want a vibrant downtown, we need help. And I'm here, whatever the chief needs. I want to tell the police, thank you for what you do every day, because it's not an easy job. If you look at some of these videos, it's really disheartening. So the main problem is, not everyone that's in this room, y'all were not fighting downtown. But thank you for coming because you care. We need this chamber full every other Tuesday, giving us ideas and letting us know what you see that we don't see. So thank you, and I'm here to listen, and the tools we get, I welcome them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Is that, you know, we listen to our constituents, as you all know. And my constituents are police officers, law enforcement, first responders. They have voices. They have concerns over what has happened. They're not happy. They're very concerned on where they are in their strength. Their strength equals their safety. And so, this council has always been on the front lines, the tip of the spear, to ensure that our officers, every law enforcement officer, our first responders get the tools that they need, the modern electronics, whatever is necessary. I think our goal here is to have open, honest, respectful dialogue. Because we can resolve this. We have to decide what we want Shreveport to look like and how we're going to get there. The pastor told me once that a man that harms another man doesn't have a problem with that man, he has a problem with God. Because if we love God, regardless of the faith that we profess, then we're not going to hurt each other. And we've gone off the rails here and there over our history, but we can get back. And I'm not saying that prayer is going to do everything. God wants us to actually get in the trenches and do things for ourselves. Okay? You know, we're not going to, you know, prayer's necessary, don't get me wrong. We're going to pray our way out of this, but we're going to pray our way out of this in the name of Jesus, and we're going to pray our way out of this in the name of action. So I appreciate, I do appreciate everything that y'all have done for us, the encouragement, the emails, the text messages, your willingness to come forward and give us your voice, because that's really what matters. You know, we are here as your liaison to exercise your voices. And we're here to make sure that you have a safe environment to live, play, and work in. And that's been our goal from day one since I came on this council, and I don't see anything changing. So I do appreciate your willingness to come forward, and your willingness to hang out with us on a Tuesday when you could be other places. And again, we are Shreveport, and this is going to be a collaborative effort. And as long as we're honest, as long as we're respectful, and as long as that we're open, you know, we'll get this solved. Thank you very much.
That's what Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Downtown Shreveport is my district. I'm going to guess that I spend more time downtown at night than any other council member, possibly all of them put together. This, Councilman Taylor was right. I think, of course, we all need prayer, but that ship has sailed for some of these people. We have to have some type of enforcement. I don't know what the answer is. Sheriff, city marshal, overtime, maybe get some people out of their office, officers that work eight to five jobs and have them on the street at night. But the videos are terrible. Nobody's going to want to go downtown. At some point, it's going to affect the casinos, all of the restaurants and nightclubs, and then eventually, probably the businesses that are during the day will move out. So we're here to try to figure out the answers. I don't necessarily have them, I don't know that anybody does. I'll say something Councilman Butcher didn't want to say, we're 158 officers short. So they are stressed, they're strained. So we have bought, I think, every piece of equipment the chief has asked us to, technology-wise. I don't know if that's enough. I think we're here today to start trying to figure out how we don't have another video like we've seen the last two or three weekends. Thank you.
Mayor Arsenault, do you have any statements?
Yes, I want to thank all the members of the public that are here. I want to thank you, Madam Chair, for your remarks. We are here to solve a problem. We're not here to point fingers at each other. We are here to solve an issue, and we together will solve it. The activity that we saw is unacceptable, whether we need additional legislation, whether we need additional manpower, whatever we need, we're going to resolve this issue, and we're going to make sure that people not only are safe downtown, but perceive that they are safe downtown.
Thank you, sir. So before we move to public comments, I'm going to ask former Representative Cedric Glover to come forward, and I'm going to tell you the reason why. Not in his current position as the DDA director, but in 2008, I'm actually going to leave some copies of this for you. Downtown had a monotony of issues. At the time, Henry Whitehorn, who was our current sheriff, was the chief of police. Joyce Bowman, former city councilman, councilwoman, was sickened by what was happening downtown, and she was the public safety chair. Monty Walford was the councilperson of that district, and this is what I need you to understand. And this is no slight, but this is just how this works. The council initiates legislation. The mayor executes those, because he's the executor and his staff of the city. The police department, none of those departments work for the council. So I know y'all always screaming, "The council, the council, the council," but we don't handle the day-to-day operations of the council, of the city. We do listen and make every point to work in collaboration with the mayor, to listen to what the needs are and address them accordingly within our powers. But if you say, "This department didn't do this," it's the only department right here, these two ladies right here and that lady back there, they work for the council. It's the only people that we have control over. So everything that we do is an ask to the administration. It is an ask on our behalf. So in 2008, this councilwoman Bowman, not Ursula Bowman, Joyce Bowman, former councilwoman, had a request as well with the concerns. The administration at that time, Mayor Glover was the mayor, Henry Whitehorn was the chief, and presented a 56-point plan. I believe Tim Huck may be in the chamber, but they went out to business owners, because that time that you saw rapes, you saw so much stuff that was happening downtown, and they initiated a 56-point plan that's in this particular legislation. It was Resolution 148, asking Mayor Glover to do the things that y'all are asking us to do today. And that encompasses police officers walking the street so they can engage with the community of specified downtown unit. That was it. They engage with business owners to ask them to place security cameras, all of those things, institute all of these other things, even when they kick somebody out of their club, to notify police of the problem person that they had. That's the history. Okay? And so, now we're seeing where there are some of these things happening again that we go back and review. So nothing that we're asking at this point is new. But if you look at that span and that stretch during that time, have you had more problems downtown, or did you see less? Yes, what was highlighted here was highlighted, but at the majority of the time, we blaming this, they looked at club owners, they looked at all of these individuals. When a club owner secured their club, there is a thing called self-responsibility when you walk out of that club onto the public street. And those individuals that create these acts have to be held accountable for what they do. And there is a legal response to that, that they need to be arrested for what they've done. Period. Because until the message is sent that this is not going to be tolerated, they will feel that downtown is their playground. Bottom line. I'll give you the floor for a few minutes, remember a few minutes.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, and all of you who are gathered here. I'm here today to be a resource, to be able to provide to all involved, from the council to the administration, to law enforcement, to the community, to all of our downtown stakeholders, to be able to share with you the lessons and the examples of things that we have done, both in the past and things that we are presently doing. The one thing that most of you all do not know is that I, along with Councilman Brooks and Captain Silva and Lieutenant Sanchez and other members of the Shreveport Police Department, along with my staff, members of Parks and Recreation and other folks from the city of Shreveport, were meeting just this past Wednesday, talking about the protocols that we were going forward with for last weekend with regard to additional policing in presence within downtown Shreveport. What last weekend shows is that there is still more yet that needs to be done. There are more resources that are going to be needed. There's a larger presence that is going to have to be able to be activated and delivered. As an example, one of the things that came out of that discussion was the understanding that there was a limited amount of activity that was going to take place over that weekend within the 200 block of Texas Street, because one establishment is closed due to fire, another had no intentions of opening. And so, the expectation that that would be an area of heavy focus and attention was one that was not necessarily measured or intended. We knew that there had been previous incidents down in the Red River District. We knew that we had a live band performing in the Red River District on Halloween night. So we knew that there were other clubs having various Halloween-related activities throughout other parts of downtown, and so that's where those assets were primarily focused around and where this particular disturbance ended up manifesting itself from. I know that SPD is still researching and documenting that, and we're going to take that intel and continue to work to try and see if we can't be a part of coming up with a more effective strategy. But the one thing I think that you all have all hit on that has absolutely got to be a consistent message, and that is, we love our young people. We want them to be able to have a good time and a fun time, and for Shreveport to be a place that they enjoy. But bottom line is, this type of activity is just simply not acceptable. And if you engage in it, you're going to have to be held fully accountable for it. And as Councilman Butcher and others of you have said, downtown is the origin of Shreveport. It's the common ground for all of us. It's in all of our DNAs, and so, it's someplace that should be considered special. And that's one of the reasons why, in looking at what we could do within the downtown community to be able to send that message, the idea of doubling the reward for the apprehension of the individuals who engage in this and similar activity is something that we want to serve as a motivating factor to let folks know that while we concerned about what happens within our neighborhoods and everywhere else throughout this city, downtown is the connecting point that not only ends up being where Shreveport came from, but it's what accounts for why this region is the third largest in the state of Louisiana. And while it has its challenges, it also has a great deal of positive things that are going on within it. So for those folks who say that you don't trust coming downtown right now, I want you to know that there are a great number of wonderful restaurants that need you to come downtown, daytime, for lunch and dinner and what have you. And to the extent that you feel comfortable, come down in the evening hours as well. There are theaters and art galleries and businesses, lawyers, engineers, architects, accountants that are within downtown that need you to come and be continually comfortable in being a part of coming to downtown. Understand that our master plan from 2011 said the most significant thing that Shreveport has going for itself, that it represents the only real authentic urban core within a region bounded by Little Rock, Jackson, Baton Rouge, and Dallas. That's our downtown. That's what makes us special. That's what makes us unique. That was part of what made us such an effective vehicle for the film industry, that we can end up converting that downtown, everything from Washington DC to New York City to Los Angeles, California. And so, we need to understand that it's a wonderful place, it's a great place, but it can be even better and greater, and we have the obligation to use all of our wherewithal collectively to figure out how we get it there.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Would it be okay if I ask him just a couple of questions about this resolution? So Resolution 148, first off, I need to ask Mr. Edwards this, is this has not been amended in any way since it was passed?
I don't know. It's my first time seeing it.
I would like for you to review this for us and let us know if this has been amended in any way other than open container, which has been added to the Red River District. My question for you, Mayor Glover, former Mayor Glover, Representative Glover.
Just don't call me Lee.
DDA Director Glover.
Just don't call me Lee for dinner.
Yeah, me either. Back in 2008, when this was put into place, I think that there's a few things that aren't parallel that we're dealing with right now. Number one is, we have a huge presence of food trailers, which means that people are not inside of these clubs, patronizing the club, they're more gathering around the food trailers. The second issue that we have is, we have a lot more drug activity, from what I'm being told, that happens in downtown Shreveport. You know, there's people openly smoking marijuana, there's all these other different things that just contribute to the situation. And then we have, you know, we voted in the open container in the Red River District, but we have people bringing in alcohol, and they're just drinking it on the streets. To me, that's an issue that needs to be, if we're going to do this resolution, and it looks great, I mean, I'm glad that you brought this up, because it's great, but there's some new, modern things that I think that we need. Were y'all dealing with those situations back then?
Everything, there's nothing new under the sun. Is there some variation of it that manifests itself again? You know, history doesn't repeat, but it rhymes.
Right.
And so, this is rhyming with things that we dealt with and overcome back in 2008, and it's a matter of doing it right now. One of the things that was specific to that resolution is that it did in fact lead to some ordinances that required certain things from a staffing standpoint in terms of securities, training, and what have you. Also, one of the things that obviously would need to be updated is that what we were dealing with back then, to former Chief Whitehorn, Sheriff Whitehorn presently is a credit, was the understanding that we were in the transition from analog technology, when it came to cameras and what have you, to digital technology. And so, much of that was a requirement that clubs that had antiquated old, low-quality, low-resolution equipment and what have you, upgrade to that which was more reliable. And I'm sure between 2008 to now, that has leaped several generations as well, and so that's one of the areas that may need some focus and attention also.
And I think you're correct. I think if we look at the history and what we did right and try to mold it into today's environment, it's a great roadmap. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here that I think that we could take point by point and go through and tailor it to what we're dealing with today.
Absolutely.
You know, I think that I would love for, you know, I don't know if there needs to be, there needs to be more conversation. And, you know, the police chief, you, the mayor, the council chair, the public safety chair, the, we need to go through this, or they need to go through this specifically and tailor it to what we need today, because it's a good roadmap. And I think learning from your experience as mayor during the time when we did have problems, and now you're in a different role, is a wealth of knowledge that we need to try to tap into. So thank you for bringing him up, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Like I said, we're here as a resource, as an example of what you're talking about, Councilman Butcher, I referenced the meeting from last Wednesday. That wasn't our first meeting. We have been We have been meeting on an ongoing basis where we are encouraging, uh, each other to get out of our silos, so that we end up with the DDA and SPD and the sheriff, uh, and Hope Connections and, uh, the, uh, Crisis Mobile Center, uh, and the council members and all of those folks, uh, Parks and Recreation, Public Buildings, Public Works, so that we're all at the table having a conver- conversation about the common problems that we share. And so, you know, that, that's been part of what allowed us to do some of the things that have worked well for us so far. And we're, we're thankful for the opportunity to be able to do more of it.
Well, and I think, I think one of the biggest things is, um, Mr. Glover and I met with a, with a large grocery store chain to go in a building that we have existing, uh, to put a small market in downtown Shreveport. And I kind of think they're on the fence. They've, they've said at this point, it may not be something that we, we want to do, but we have a building, the old, uh, Community Development Building that, and I'll just name their name, Brookshire's.
Pioneer Bank.
Had voiced an interest and Mr. Glover met me down there and we walked through it and they called back and they said, you know, we, we see the value in it, but incidents like this happening right out in front of that building, I don't know if they're gonna want to invest in it. So we've got to get this cleaned up where we can have more businesses come down and more population. And people from my area town in Southeast Shreveport that want to come down and eat at the restaurants as opposed to staying in our little corridor down there. So, uh, I, I, I just want everybody to use this as a roadmap, because I think it's a, I think it's a great idea.
I think the actions of a few individuals should not, uh, be the highlight of what is happening in downtown. With these individuals making the significant investments that they are, they're going to make those investments. At the same time, they're gonna watch and see what we're doing in order to do that. And that's the other reason that we're here. Because we have to send the message, oh, no, 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 you ain't gonna mess up what we just worked hard for, for years. It takes years to get this stuff to happen, years for it to come to fruition. And the bills, business owners that are already in downtown, we need to ensure that their businesses continue to grow, not hurt, not wanting them to leave. I'm also gonna thank Representative Jackson for asking the governor for additional state police in this area to do this. Because I'm telling you then, the business owners back then, the business owners back then said, listen, we coming, we know this gonna cost us some money, but this is what we want to do. Probably why I hear Tim Huck says, execute the law, make sure you following the law. Because at that particular point in time, these are the things that are right here that we have to do. And so we rewind the tape and honestly, and see where the heck we messed up. Bottom line.
Right.
And then we have to take upon where we've messed up and get it right, period. We could talk about everybody else who come, but we have to look at where we, because public safety is our first priority. That's what it is. And so we have to turn around and fix it. But what I'm asking you personally is for your help. That's what I'm asking you for. And so if it's a fight that does happen in your business, contact the police, let them know we got somebody on the street. Whatever it is that needs to be given, because that's not the only request that I'm gonna have for at the state either regarding our law enforcement. I look at they supplemental pay and all those other things that they have that have not been touched. Those are the things that we have to look at in putting information and sending that to our congressman of what we need to do, because this is a collaborative effort. This is a collaborative effort and I don't want anybody to lose sight of that. All right? So putting them in, putting them away for causing this activity to send a message is that. But we gotta embrace the businesses where we are, stop blaming the other businesses that don't have any reason to go over here and harbor this. No. What we looking at are the proactive businesses that are working to do this to make our city safe. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Um, if, if I could leave with, with one last statement, uh, but I yield to.
No, go.
A- and, and that is, I, I know that there is a conversation about bringing in other agencies, which I think is wonderful. And that, that goes back to, to my years even before getting elected to, as the Neighborhood Association President of the MLK Neighborhood Association with Operation Thor, which brought in, uh, SPD with the Louisiana State Police and federal sheriff department. Uh, that was the largest mobilization of, of law enforcement in this region at the time. I know there's now some talk about bringing in, uh, the National Guard. Uh, the one thing I would offer in that regard in terms of, of messaging back to the governor uh, and our state officials is that the folks that you would look to bring here for that, I would encourage it to be those folks, whether it's the guard or in the various reserve units that actually function in a policing capacity, the MP units. Those would be the folks who would be most helpful, because those are folks who are actually trained in law enforcement activities. Uh, and so those are the ones that could effectively be integrated into some law enforcement activities. The idea of bringing some kid that's nineteen years old from small town Shreveport and putting them downtown Shreveport with an automatic weapon, I don't think would be a good idea. You know, we're not talking about enforcing a curfew here during a time of a public emergency. We're talking about engaging in effective policing activity. So if we could rifle that request to military folks who actually have actual policing, uh, experience and training, that would be more helpful in terms of what we're trying to accomplish.
I think initially my, my knee jerk, um, when I made a post on Sunday about the mayor reaching out to the governor was not for the National Guard, it was for more help from LSP. And I understand that there have been several LSP in downtown Shreveport over the last few months. Maybe if we could step that up to help supplement our officers, I, I agree with you. I don't, I don't think we need reservists that, uh, that have no law enforcement experience. Uh, MPs would be the way to go. So, uh, but I would, I would prefer that we start with, with getting help from LSP, a stronger force. I mean, they helped really clean up downtown New Orleans and when they kind of helped take over down there. So that's, that was what my intent was, not, not National Guard at this point.
Understood. But those MP units could be helpful.
They could be, yes, sir, I agree.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, uh, members.
Yes, sir. Uh, Madam Chair, I, I just need to say this. When I came here today, I had, my heart was very, very heavy. But I have to admit, seeing all of you at ten o'clock in the morning to come out, that shows care and that shows concern. And you all have lifted my spirit, I don't know about the rest of the council, but you all have lifted my spirit and lifted my heart to let the world know today, Shreveport cares and Shreveport has hope. And you all have really blessed me and I'd just like for the council, the mayor and our clerk and all to give you all a great hand for being here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we have requests to speak, that will be handled by Madam Vice Chair. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Mr. Gregory Powell. Good morning, I need your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, Gregory Powell, seven thirty Lookin Drive. Uh, I wanted to say, um, thank you to the mayor, the council, SPD for having this forum for us today so that we could all be on the same page and hear what the plans are going in the future. That way we can weigh in as we see fit. Um, I'm a downtown stakeholder. As most of you know, I do bicycle tours here in the city of Shreveport. I've been doing that for six years. Those tours happen in downtown. And I know we, we get real, you know, confused about how much violence is in downtown. And I, I can tell you from my personal experience, I've driven Uber, I've driven Lyft, downtown is extremely safe. Now, we do have these problems and I understand that. But we do tours all day and all night, but we stop at eleven thirty. That was a judgment call that I made where I saw fit. I did not want to have bicyclists on the streets of Shreveport late at night and it wasn't because of violence. It was never because of violence, it was always because of safety in terms of the potential for impaired drivers at night, possibly texting and driving, drinking and driving, being impaired. I could not afford to risk anybody's life over money. I wanted to make sure that they were safe because at night, that's when the problems happen. I'm forty-six, I remember when downtown was extremely vibrant, I remember what it was like then, I know what it's like now. I would definitely want you all to keep engaging with people like myself who operate and function and party and hang out in downtown, because people like myself have a very good bead on what's going on.
Correct.
Um, I saw the video just like everybody else and something very clear stood out to me. That was, there weren't any police at the time. Generally, these fights and things like that, they don't happen like that. They happen over time, they kind of swell, they kind of build and they swell. And we didn't see any police until everything was over. And I'm not bashing the police, I'm not trying to take anything out on the police. Um, I, I think I heard the, uh, the chief of police talk about they had a plan. And I think Cedric Glover said they had a plan and they didn't expect what happened. Uh, but what did happen on the video, soon as the police came, everybody started moving around. And so just like we came in here today, there became a new standard for coming in City Hall. And when you came in City Hall, there was new protocols. Well, when City Hall opens up every day, those protocols are gonna be set in place. You're not gonna open up City Hall and all of a sudden, well, we just don't feel like doing the metal detection thing today. So we've got to come up with a new minimum standard for downtown that we're gonna uphold no matter what. So if we have to pull people from South City Shreveport, or we have to pull people from North Shreveport to make sure that minimum standard is, is there, then that's what we're gonna have to start doing. And also making sure that the police are accountable to actually being on their post like they're supposed to. Uh, we've seen, we've all been kids in school before and we've seen what happens when.
Mr. Powell.
There's no teacher at the classroom.
But I want to thank you for your comments and we appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Mr. Craig Lee.
Take your time.
Yes, you citizen. Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Um, first question, what does the coaching staff and players for any professional sports team, NBA, NFL, MLB do after every game? They have team meetings to discuss what went right, what went wrong before, during and after the game. And they watch videotape. Now, why does the coaching staff and players do this? To see how they can improve and they can get better in order to win the championship game that they are competing for. Now, the question we have to ask ourselves is what is the goal for Shreveport, Louisiana? Do we have aspirations and a commitment to win the world championship in human Olympics? Because we're talking about tourism and hospitality and attracting people to our city to live, work and play. Or do, do we want to continue being a mediocre, mid-sized city that allows unconscious individuals to brand our city as ratchet city? Crime is not a problem. It is a symptom of a problem. The problem is no empowerment, the ability to control your destiny spiritually, culturally, educationally, economically, socially and politically. This is an ethics and morality issue, period. But morality cannot be legislated. So we have to now deal with the options that we have in order to reduce violent crime. As, as co-founder of Dad's On Duty, this is one of the reasons why we created Dad's On Duty, because we had another video to go viral at Southwood and we had all these gang fights. And now we're four and a half years later and guess what? No gang fights. But it is a, it is a cooperation between individuals who are willing to roll up their sleeve. Our chairman, Mike Morgan, is one of our best, um, employees for the city of Shreveport. But we work with Dr. Kim Pendleton, we work with Ms. Betty Jordan, and we're working with our current, uh, principal right now, Ms. Grant. And now we don't have those particular issues, but it is a situation where people have to roll up their sleeves and get involved. It's just the bottom line.
Correct.
Now, I have a few suggestions. Number one, the city of Shreveport needs to file a lawsuit against the manufacturers of violent video games. Because that's a part of the reason why the people are actually doing these things. Number two, there needs to be a lawsuit filed against the parent companies of the radio stations that play the violent music. Because they do this every day and they're programming the people to actually do this. We need to force radio stations to have positive empowerment programming developed by grassroots advocates and activists. We need to invest funds into empowerment programs, projects and events. And then number five, we need to establish an anti-ratchet city promotion campaign. Shreveport is not no damn ratchet city.
Mr. Lee, your time.
Not no damn ratchet city.
Mr. Lee, your time is expired.
And I don't care how they try to flip it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Oliver.
Al Oliver.
Didn't hear you at first, sorry. Uh, Alvin Oliver, two three one nine, uh, Fernbrook Drive, Shreveport. Uh, first of all, let me say that, uh, I thank you all for having this forum. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the three hundred and fifty member, uh, NAACP Shreveport Branch six zero seven eight B. And I have a, a prepared statement here, uh, from the NAACP. Uh, Shreveport should be a place of pride, safety and an opportunity for all citizens. Not a zone of fear of violence. The recent tragedies and ongoing disorders have left families grieving. Longtime supporters of downtown being frightened away from the heart of our city. Our community is hurting, our frustrations have grown because calls for change have gone unanswered. Lives endangered, businesses threatened. The reputation of our city demands real solutions, not more delays, not more excuses. We must commit today to actions beyond talk, immediate and visible police presence and the installation of real-time crime cameras in the troubled areas. We need to hold every stakeholder accountable, including owners and city leaders accountable for restoring order and trust. No friendship, no business connections or positions of influence should outweigh the community's safety. If collaborative efforts, including more resources or even the National Guard is needed, we should put aside our pride and embrace that help. Because our children and our families and our futures depend on it. This city has shown resilience in the past in the face of hardship and together we can reclaim downtown. But we must now prioritize people over politics and solutions over silence. The escalating violence in downtown Shreveport is not only a public safety crisis, but it's also a community and economic emergency. We can no longer afford to lose the trust of our citizens or the investors who have long believed in this city's future. I urge this council to act decisively now by increasing police presence, installing real-time crime cameras in the affected blocks, particularly near the clubs where repeated incidents occurs. Accountability, accountability must be restored now. Again, no business, board members or leaders should be exempt from responsibility when public, uh, safety is at stake. Fifty Cent is now one of the biggest stakeholders, if not the biggest stakeholder in downtown Shreveport. So I ask you leaders and all you friends of Fifty Cent, would he be pleased with what's going on in Shreveport right now? I'd venture to say he would not be. He also says that all roads lead to Shreveport. So I'm asking you, will all roads continue to lead to Shreveport if things continue to go the way they're going? Or will all roads lead away from Shreveport? It's time to act today. Thank you.
In response, um, to that, those particular requests or requests that the council has made of the mayor because he has to execute that, we've already allocated money for that. And as it relates to G Unit, uh, Mr. Jackson has already purchased cameras for the downtown area. We was just waiting for the mayor to get back at the hospital.
Chase Boyden.
Hello, my name's Chase Boyd, I'm, I'm at two oh five Wall Street. I've been a business owner in downtown Shreveport for, gosh, I guess like twenty years. I've been, I've worked downtown for twenty-three years. Um, I, I just really wanted to say two things. I mean, first of all, I've, for the most part, I've kept kind of quiet about some of the issues just because I, um, you know, I've always seen like crime kind of ebb and flow in downtown, but it definitely, things have been very, very bad. And I've, and I've, you know, I've talked in private more about it, but, um, things are so bad that about a year or two ago, about a year or two ago, I witnessed a horrific shooting on Texas Street where multiple people got shot. I don't know how it didn't make national news. Um, several people died. I witnessed it, and I went to my wife, and I was, I've been here all 42 years of my life in Shreveport, and I said, "Do we need to move? Do we just need to move?" Uh, and it hasn't really gotten much better. I mean, I would just, I just wanted to give a couple of stories. Uh, the last four or five years, we have, uh, done all the catering for Shrek puts on a deal on 4th, uh, 4th of July down there, and you could just feel something was off. Um, young people were throwing firecrackers off the bridge. People thought it was shooting, people were kind of on edge. And when I was loading out that night, s- a couple of young kids were tackled, and guns came fight right next to me. Same story, I went back to my wife and I said, "Next year, I'm just going to say no, and I'm not going to do it." And, uh, if, the fight aside, I think that there, it's really, really gotten bad, and, and we, we have to kind of declare state of emergency. One, we, and this comes to the solution. These cameras do nothing. They're not afraid of cameras. If they're going to commit crimes, whatever we're spending on that, we need actual manpower. Whenever we have police in the river district where I've been since 2003, simply just sitting in a car playing solitaire deters crime, because they know in an instance, somebody's going to be there to respond to it. Um, I've owned businesses at 205 and 211 Texas for eight-plus years, uh, through the mid 2000s. We always had police officers on that corner, and my good friend who's at the Energy Building called me after a shooting happened a few months ago and was like, "How in the world do we not have police on Texas Street, right there, where people are walking?" I mean, he just literally was like, "I don't understand what we need to do here." And he has since moved his business, he's now at, uh, Ashley Ridge. And I just don't know what we need to do, but it, it's got to change. We need manpower, they have to be down there. They've got to, especially on the weekends, they need to be seen in every direction. And, you know, I, I really feel for these officers, like you mentioned to at the beginning, how, how, you know, um, how little they're paid, long hours and that sort of thing. I mean, maybe we just need to like, offer a bonus, yes ma'am, I'm-
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Golda Easter?
Morning.
Good morning, my voice kind of left me yesterday. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about with the community.
I need your name and address for the local police.
Oh, sorry. Golda Easter, 821 Almdale Street. Um, with, um, the black community, we have a lot of perverse communities. With the schools and education at kind of lowest, it's going to be a problem with the crime. Now, I have had, um, a young lady who wanted to fight my daughter. Um, my daughter answered fighting calls, she was never a bully, but if people tried to jump her, she would fight, sometimes meeting people. I did not allow this or encourage it. One of the young ladies came to my home, tried to break in my house with my young, my son there. I did call the police, I reported it. I was working for the city, I sent an email to my mayor. Also went to the office, and I know he had just gotten in, maybe he was busy. I don't know if he got a chance to res- to respond to it. When I was terminated, um, from the city of Shreveport, I never got a follow-up. So I don't know what happened, I reported the fighting at the skating rinks, fighting at the parking lots of the grocery stores when the hours are closed. This has been happening for several years. I would call into the police hotline when I saw children live, meeting, I mean, 20 to 50 children meeting to fight, one-on-one, one after the other, getting cut. Give my daughter was almost hit, she was jumped on by nine people, two were young men. I took her to the hospital, made a report with the officer. He gave me a report number, I called that report number to follow up. The, the woman in, uh, record said it was not available, report number. What are we to do for those that speak out and speak up? So when Mr. Whitehorn came in, I have seen, you know, the efforts that he's made since he's been, I know there's a shortage, but like the gentleman who sat next to me said, "Fifty, 6,500 vacant lots, bringing no revenue." In fact, it cost the city about $2 million to keep up those properties. If those were revenue-producing properties, maybe there would be opportunity to hire the 158 more officers. They do need help, they're not getting it. And some of the officers who have been caught doing some defiling things, we are so grateful because those are the things that you got to see. What about the things you didn't get to see? What about people who are reporting to the officers, who are family members, who might be engaging or might be receiving money, who says it does or doesn't happen? But something definitely has happened to where it is not, like he said, made of national news when two to three people can get their brains blown out on camera, live fights happening in this city very often. I work with the Cattle Parish Detention Center. My company is Be Great Solutions with the Conflict Resolution and Self-Identity Program that was helping and working with those children. They say they have no funding for me to come and help. I even did it pro bono when they didn't have enough fu- funding, but then they didn't have enough staffing, so it's, it stopped.
Your time has expired, um, so you say you did follow up with the sheriff's office?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
And they have followed up with you?
I, I, ma'am.
They, they did follow up with you?
I didn't get any follow-up. Even with the young lady that came in to attack me with my 14-year-old son, that child endangerment, that's, uh, her breaking and entering, pushing in my door. I literally had to cut this young lady, thank God I had a knife on my count, on my, um, fireplace. I'm not happy, I had to cut her. But if she would have come in and attacked me, I don't know if she had a gun or not. Officers did come out, but I didn't get a follow-up.
Chief Wayne to get with her.
Chief Wayne? He stepped out.
Officer Borderland, would you please make, uh, take a report for this young lady right here?
Now, this was a few years ago.
That's okay.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Michael Williams?
To, uh, Madam Chairman, to our mayor, glad to have you back covering, uh, 2101 Carver Place, Shreveport, Louisiana. Late Papa Martin said before he died, "We got a lot of hallelujah, but we have no doo-lujah." We'd allow the politics to hijack the word of God. I have a scripture Pastor Green, from the Book of Michael, chapter six, he was a prosecutor for God. He had put Israel on trial, I think America's on trial. Chapter, they say, "He has shown you, old man, what is good, and what does the law require of you to act justly and love mercy and walk humble before God." And that's not what we're doing. We got to put people over politics. We got to put people over power. We got to put people over personality. We need prayer, police, and we need people, and we need power. And one other thing we have is that we have to understand that we living in the, the last days, we're living in the last days, and the Bible talks about these. You can put a police on every corner, but there'll be a criminal hiding behind the bush. You trying to put a Band-Aid on a compound fracture that's been going on for years and years and years on the glass. The people don't have confidence in this administration about being safety in the city of Shreveport. Not only downtown, but uptown. We got all type of initiative going on. We got, we got, what we got going on in Shreveport? We got the National Public Safety Council, we got Operation Safe Neighborhood, we got Shreveport Choice Neighborhood, we got the Real-Time Crime Center. Until you change people heart, you're not going to be able to change people here. So we, what I'm saying is that we do need some help. We need to bring in the National Guard and that for the Declaration to come and help us solve our police problem. We need men and women that train police officers in the military. I was in the military police company while I was in the military. They do have trained people that can do the job because they are civilians too. We need solution, not excuses. We got enough policies and laws on the book to enforce the laws on the book. We got what, ordinance number 18 that deal with what, squatting on the streets? We need, and this is unacceptable on the soul of America. We are a nation and a city of law and order. It's not a black thing, white thing, it's a right thing. And we got to be inclusive and work together for all God's people, and we're not. We leave here with pretty speeches, camera shot, and leave out the same way we came in. Be worried about who, who get the credit, but let God get the glory. And it's just time for a change. It's time for us to come together and make Shreveport a city for all people. Not just the rich, the have-not, the have, but the have-nots. People are suffering, they need help. So I offer some solution before I sit down, just one thing I think we need, uh, and Cedric talked about it, we need to, uh, create a downtown hotspot team and maybe have a campaign to talk about downtown, uh, respect, law and order campaign. Just come with a campaign and make it inclusive where everybody can feel good and have a better quality life by coming to our city. In spite of all that, Shreveport is a great city to live in, I look for Shreveport being the new Hollywood city of the new south, thank you.
Thank you. Lester Smith?
Morning.
Morning.
Lester Smith, 4148 Theo Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. First of all, I'd like to say, if we ever needed God, we need him now. Because we, we're going through some things, and it's not because of bad people, but it's because of the lack of God. We got churches on every corner in our community, and morally, we are dead. And, and, and we don't even have an idea how to solve the problems that we're confronted with. I was in Washington DC some years ago, and it made national news. Five young men were killed on the corner of Jewella and Hollywood, right there at Winfield Funeral Home. And I came home from DC a few days later, and we got together, Michael Williams and myself, and we formed a coalition. Say, "This stuff not going to stop with people talking about it." You got to get the people that's causing the problem involved in what you're doing, because we've been talking about it for years, and nothing has changed. Until you bring the people to the table that's causing the problem, we're going to continue to see what we see. We got to get these young people to the table some way, somehow. And not only do we have to bring the young people to the table, we have to come together as a community, black, white, whatever color. This is the Shreveport issue. And we can no longer just leave it laying on the table as it's a day, their issue. It's an issue where we all want what's best for Shreveport, but yet and still, we're not willing to put the time of the effort in. You can't talk about putting on the whole armor of God. You got the whole armor on, but you're afraid to go outside the building. The issue is not up in the church, the issue is outside the building. And I can't think of his name, but the, there's a scripture that they talk about oftentimes. Said, "If the Lord needs somebody, here am I." And here the he, here am I, he's talking about men's and women in these communities, you're going to have to get with your children, you're going to have to get with your neighbor's child. You're going to have to make some sacrifices, you're going to have to roll your sleeves up, get dirty, get down and dirty, and do what you need to do. People, we've got to stop making excuses and being afraid of where we live and the people that live in the communities where we live. We've got to confront these people where they are and deal with them. Invite them to the table so that they can be a part of a solution. How you going to invite somebody to dinner, I'm going to fix your favorite dinner, and you don't even know what they eat? What they like, but you just say you're going to fix your favorite? Get with these people, find out, and I'm going to tell you one other thing. When these kids leave home, they leave a war zone. So they're coming to do war, they got war on their minds. We got to fix where these people live, my community, your community, all of these communities. We've got to work on some of this plight, some of the neglect, some of the hopelessness, some of the despair.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Irma Rogers?
Morning. Irma Rogers, good morning, 1920 Meeshood Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7107. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Mayor and Staff. I come with just a couple of comments today on things that might be helpful. Things that I know we used to do in the past that were workable and doable. These were under our COP Bureau, Community Oriented Policing, which use our CLOs, Community Liaison Officers, and NATS, Neighborhood Assistance Team. Circa twenty, 2009 and 2010, Mrs. Sandra Lister wrote a program called The Law and Youth Academy, and another one that we instituted called The Law and You. The Law and Youth Academy was taught during the summer months. They brought in the children who were in our SPAR recreational facilities for their camps. And they would go out to the Police and Fire Academy on Greenwood Road for about three days, and then Friday, we'd have a banquet. During those three days, the students were taught the basics and what policing could do. They were taught about CSI techniques of how you could get caught. They spent two days with the police and one day with the fire department. The fire department always blew something up because they knew they liked that, but they taught them how to repair and other things that fire department has to do. You're dealing with a culture, a undercurrent of violence with the young people we have now. So those are issues that we're going to have to address. Find some ways to address them. The other program, The Law and You, addressed our young people, 18 to 45 or older. Taught them certain laws. We did the same thing with the high school students. What is common knowledge of a juvenile? These children don't know that in high school. They don't know how their lives can be changed with a sex crime that have followed them the rest of their lives. We use the Sheriff Department, Police Department, anybody for those things. We would go into the high schools and teach that. But during the summer months, we had a captive audience because those students would come from all over the SPARs. You'd have 90 to about 130 children in those program. Think of how many lives are touched. They taught character building. What is kindness? What is honesty? What is trustworthiness? All of those things were taught at that time. I don't see them right now. They still have The Law and Youth Academy, but it's down to a half a day. So, it's just a couple of suggestions, because we work with the youth a lot, we do a lot of tutoring. We're in the high schools and elementary schools. If you see this undercurrent of the violence, as Mr. Lee said, that's part of their culture that they are being taught. So what are we going to do to reverse those teachings that are violent? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Huck?
Timothy Huck, 415 Spring Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Madam Councilwoman, I appreciate how you, uh, Madam Chair, I appreciate how you're, you're starting, how you started this, uh, conversation, and, um, our, our willingness to work together. Unfortunately, y'all have almost three years, and I believe I was standing here at y'all's very first meeting, having similar complaints. And over three years, I've had multiple complaints of this nature. Also, you brought up the 56-point plan, who I worked with Cedric Glover, and at the time, Chief Whitehorn, and Joyce Bowman on the plan. Me and Joyce Bowman started out as brutal enemies with each other when we started in these conversations. And, uh, when she passed away, I was deeply saddened because we ended up as very good friends, as Councilman, Councilwoman Ursula understands and knows from her husband and, uh, brother-in-law. Uh, why were we capable of becoming friends is because we actually sit down. I send, I send emails to this council, and I don't get responses. I have over $9 million invested in Shreveport, Louisiana. I have over $4 million invested in downtown Shreveport. So yes, I'm a very big stakeholder. Y'all talk about Curtis Jackson, and I appreciate the fact that he's coming and he is a stakeholder and that he is investing, but my investments are here today also. And I have just as much money invested. And I actually, today, create revenue every single day. And I draw business every single day. And nobody, nobody on this council returns my emails. I have ideas, and I have suggestions, and they have worked before. But you give me three minutes and then you stop me. Okay? Um, police enforcement, I'm downtown every single night. I see the police officers, I know what they do and don't do. I know what the enforcement is and isn't doing. I know what we did in 2008 to turn it around. Nobody wants to sit down. They want to tell me when my three minutes is up and sit me down. Okay? If you really want suggestions, we used to meet on a regular basis. We started with DDA meetings, then we started with the public safety meetings. I sat with, I sat with Joyce Bowman at least once a month for over two years. And we solved a lot of problems together. And it wasn't just me, she had other club owners sitting with her and other stakeholders in there. And it wasn't just me, she had other club owners sitting with her and other stakeholders in downtown Shreveport. The building properties in downtown are decreasing in value. The crime is up. They literally had people yesterday who were sitting to the radio station, when they come, when their pool teams play at Sandbar, they don't come downtown, they won't come to Sandbar. Not they don't like Sandbar, they don't feel safe enough to come there. They enjoy the establishment, they enjoy the food, they like to play pool, all the things I offer, but they don't feel safe coming down. So when you see me up here angry, understand it's because you're getting in my pocket. Okay? And I understand you're saying, public safety, public safety is crazy important. I can't stand to see a person get kicked on the ground. Now, when you get back to the real simple deal, as a bar owner, I call the cops way too often. Because if a punch is thrown, or if I feel like a punch is gonna be thrown, I call the police immediately. Why? Because I don't want three and a half minute response time, three and a half minutes after the fight started.
Mr. Huck.
I got my three minutes.
Your time is up.
As, as always.
But I'll be glad to have coffee with you in the future.
I would love that, and I don't think there's anyone up there who doesn't have my phone number, and if you don't have it, uh.
But let me ask you this, have you talked to the chief about some of these concerns that you see downtown?
Well, yeah, Whitehorn called back immediately, Smith never returned one of my emails either.
Well, uh, Tim, I, I can't speak for the emails, I don't, I don't know that you've ever actually sent me one, but we talk.
No, you.
You and I talk.
You answer my phone call every time I call. Yeah, you answer my phone call every time I call. No, you, you, you answer one hundred percent of my phone calls.
A council as a whole is unresponsive to you.
Yeah, you answer one hundred percent of my phone calls.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Tim, I, I answer your phone calls too.
Yes, you do.
My question is back to what I asked Mayor Glover. We need to go through this again and update it, and, and I agree, I think you should be part of the conversation, I think all bar owners downtown need to be part of the conversation.
Well, not just downtown, now that the four AM, all bar owners, quite a few bar owners, not every bar owner, but quite a few bar owners should be part of it.
But I think what this particular resolution is tailored to is more for downtown, and I think that, from what I'm reading, and I think that there needs to be some tweaking of it. And I think that you and every other stakeholder downtown, not just club owners, but business owners, that, that, uh, because it is true. I mean, you've got lawyers and CPAs and architects, and I got a call from a real estate company a couple of months ago when we were having a lot of trouble downtown with large crowds. And there were actually people defecating on the front of their porch, and they saw it, and it wasn't, it wasn't unhomed people, I guess is the politically correct word for that nowadays. But it was, it was actual patrons that were going to the bathroom on their front porch. So it's, it is a, it is a true issue that we've got, and I guess my question to you is, if we set meetings up, will you help us go through this since you were part of writing it, and help us mold it into what we need for today?
There's never been a council member or city official that's ever asked me to be at a meeting.
Well, I'm asking you right now.
One hundred percent, I'll be there, and I don't care if it's seven in the morning or nine at night.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Uh, Tim, I, I've never received, just for the record, I've never seen email from you nor phone call. We have talked on the street. All of the conversations that we've had with you are very aggressive, so I, 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 I kind of, I fear people who are very aggressive. Understand your anger, I understand whatever, but you can catch more butterflies with, um, cert than you can with vinegar. I'll talk to you anytime, as, as I said, I've talked to you on the street, I've never received a phone call from you, I've never had a request for you to meet with me. If you want my number, I'll give you my number, I'll give you my email, but I, I've never, other than that, that's all I've had.
Well, Councilman Green, I'm gonna tell you that you probably have been the most supportive councilman I've ever dealt with as far as a business person. However, I can show you hundreds of emails, which everyone else can tell you that they've gotten that you were definitely attached to. Um.
Let me give you my email, Tim.
Madam Chair, I mean, he's attached to everyone I send to you, and I know you've opened them, uh, because I can see they're, I understand that you may not have looked at it and saw that it came from here, whatever.
Tim, don't do that to him.
But, but you were, you have always been extremely supportive and always been extremely assistful.
Yes, sir.
But you, I have sent you many emails, but I do have your phone number, you're right.
Let me give you my number, Tim.
Okay.
Three-one-eight-six-three-five-seven-one-one-eight.
I will put it in my phone, and I will text you from now on instead of emailing.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, we're good?
I think so. Rudolph Glass.
Morning.
Morning.
Rudolph Glass, seventeen-thirty-five Arlington Avenue. I came today because it hurts to see what I saw in the video. But one thing has to be understood is this, those kids did not come here at the age they are now. They came here, some went to Head Start, they went to elementary, middle school, and high school. I worked in the school system for a few years, and I know for a fact that they're not held accountable for their actions. And it was something when you would take a child to the principal's office, they would beat you back to the classroom. So it's not all the home, it's not all the school either. It's the mothers, fathers, aunts, aunt, uncles, pastors, church members, neighbors, we're all in this together. So we cannot just blame it on one person, can't blame it on the police or nothing like that, but we have to come together to make the, I say we have to make, we have to do what needs to be done to deal with our kids as well as our city. There is a balance, we can find it, we just have to do it. And I just would like to say that I have a program called The Nurturing Father, and it will help. A lot of these young people have kids, and if we can start from Head Start, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as have other programs out there, that will work. So I have my number here, I will give to y'all before I leave, but I do have something I know that will definitely help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Paige Hoffmar.
Paige Hoffpower, ten sixty-four Gabriel's Turn, Shreveport, Louisiana. Um, I don't have a planned speech, but I'll tell you what I feel, um, is, is God's heart's desire is for all of us to dwell in unity. He didn't make one person not in His image. So I can tell you that all of us in Shreveport, we've all got a piece to the puzzle. What we saw in downtown Shreveport is a direct result of inviting bad things downtown. When we have casinos as our economic, uh, well, they said they were gonna benefit our schools when we allowed them to come. When we have Hustler down there, when we have, uh, the psychic reader, which is where the fight turned out. When we have, uh, alcohol now unrestrained, uh, when we have bars as the focus, when we have entertainment as the focus. These are not the things that will turn our city around, they will attract the demonic. And what you see that visibly happened on October thirty-first, a night, a high holy night of witches and the demonic, is what will continue to happen in this city. So when we say, if my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and turn from their wicked ways, that's us. So the, the state of our city is a direct result of the disunity of the body of Christ. The body of Christ has to come to the table of the Lord and love each other and love people and pray and seek God's face, and we must get all on one accord. Because He's already, He's already conquered death, hell, and the grave. It's to this degree that our towns and our cities should show it. It is a direct result of the people of God not standing in unity together. I can tell you what we did, several of us, and I hope this was happening throughout Shreveport. But, um, October twenty-second, we, uh, we went to the petroleum tower, and over three churches came together, and we had a unity lunch, and we said the Lord's Prayer. And, um, which is, you know, uh, the way of unity, because that was the perfect prayer Christ prayed. And, and then on October thirty-first, we worshiped. We had the lights on in our church. We actually, we worshiped for six hours in the heart of Shreveport, actually right off King's Highway, which used to be the heart of our city, is celebrating two-hundredth year of centenary college.
Yes, um, your time has expired.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Was it that long?
Yes.
May I have one more minute, please?
Uh, no, we have too many, we have several comments that we still have to get through.
Okay. Well, it's this that's in your bathroom, it's this that's in all our homes, it's this that's in our entertainment, it's this evil
Thank you, Ms. Hoffmar.
that we're inviting into our city that we, as the body of Christ, have to say no to. We have to protect our families, we can't let sexual immorality be celebrated and all these other things. God bless you.
Thank you.
Danny Cochran. Danny Cochran.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember, State public, my name is Danny Cochran, ninety-one, twenty-eight Hart Lane, seven-one-one-two-nine. I know you guys have heard boots on the ground. I think that will go save our community. I think the thing is so simple and so easy. Chief, you put the men on the ground, walk the streets of Shreveport downtown, bicycling, anything that can help, make yourself present. Give yourself some fans. You say, where the fans at? Your worst enemy could be your fan, show your face. City councilmembers. Man, I just moved back to Shreveport, people ask me all the time, why you move back to Shreveport? This is my home, this is where I was born and raised. You know, left here, went to school, graduated, went to the military, ex-VNR veteran. Hey, I know the system. If you wanna know something, ask the ex-homies. They can tell you how to proceed and get the young people ahead. Number one, we got mental health issues in the community. Don't down the young black men because they have seen witnesses, violence in their community. So they traumatized, traumatized by these threats and the issues. Help them out. You help them out, they can help you out. You might not see all this fighting and crying, you know? Give them an opportunity. You spending ten millions of dollars on a pillow park, what you putting in the, in the, uh, in the community? Show your face to some of these people, they wonder like, I only seen one time for election, been in the community with them. Find out what's going on with them, ask them, what's going on? I mean, be a brother, be a big sister. I mean, don't just talk about it in here, talk about it out there, and let them understand where you guys coming from, what you want. I like Shreveport, I go to Shreveport downtown all the time, I never seen a fight, never seen that kind of action, you know? Maybe I'm just, don't be there about the hour, three or four o'clock in the morning, but I think Shreveport is a lovely place. I think Shreveport is a beautiful town to be in. We just gotta stand together, you know, I go to church just about every Sunday, you know? Sometimes, you know, good Lord look down at you, but you gotta do for yourself, you know? So what you gotta do, stand in the community, stand on faith, go out and help these people. I done seen the mayor come to some event in the neighborhood, thank you, Mayor, 'cause you, I seen you do your part, and you about one of the best mayors I seen. You know, things not gonna change unless you guys up here get out there and be on the front line. You have to be, ain't no air and bus about it. Sir, you talking about bringing people to your community, going downtown? I wanna bring people to my home, my community, downtown.
Mr. Cochran.
Not just about your family, it's about our family.
I, I, I never said that, but what I meant was, I want downtown to be vibrant.
Alcohol could be a problem.
Mr. Cochran, your time has expired.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a great day. Tanya Roberson.
Good afternoon, I mean, morning, Mayor, Councilwoman. Uh, my, my, uh, councilman is Tabitha Taylor, my address is seventy-three eighty-two Greenwood Drive in Shreveport, Louisiana, and she's out in the city. But I just recently purchased a building at two oh-nine Texas Street so I could start business downstream. I'm a twenty-six-year Navy veteran who, and lived in many cities, so Chicago got the same crime that we got here. Everybody got crime everywhere, but I wanna start by borrowing the words from President Kennedy to say, not ask what my city can do for me, but what can I do for my city? And I'm not here to complain, but to ask, what can I do to help? The type of behavior I witnessed on the, uh, um, it's not good for business, it's not good for economy, it's not good for the city, and it's not good for our families. Businesses closed because of stuff like that, which affects the economy, which affects the city, which affects the families, and this is black, white, Jew, Gentile, Republican or Democrat, it don't even matter. But what's the problem is the hidden motives. What, do I look at crime different based on the color, do I look at crime based on crime? And then we have to ask, am I being an asset or liability to my city? If all I'm talking about is what I'm bringing, I got this, I got this, and this, okay, you got that, but what does everybody else have? See, I, I see people talk about the policeman, but what, why don't you become a policeman so you can be the policeman that you want to see? And only, only criminals talk about snitching, everybody else don't talk about snitching. And I start thinking about these councilmen, I know about my, I could tell you about my councilwoman, she's always on point, like a sniper. And I, and I also hear people say, uh, my favorite song was, I saw the Lord, He heard, and He answered. And we gotta start seeking Him for real. When we up here, we got a three minutes, we see the three minutes and help, we can't go over the minute because we're not decent in order. If you're not decent in order right here, you're not gonna be decent in order in the city, let's hold ourselves accountable. Now, the way that I see as a solution is we start with ourselves, if we get our homes right, then our neighborhoods will be right. And if our neighborhoods will be right, then our cities will be right, and if our cities are right, then our states are right. We gotta start by educating, mentoring, and training these people. We, just like Ms. Irma was talking about, we gotta train these babies, we start teaching them when they was little. Remember, little children wanted to be five and they wanna be policemen, but now they wanna be hip-hop artists and all of that. Now, I am a, a professional comedian, I turn hurt into humor, but right now, it's nothing funny about what's going on in the city of Shreveport.
Right.
And it ain't about the entertainment, but there's, there's some good clean entertainment that takes place around here. It's about us coming together, not about black and white, Jew, Gentile, Republican or Democrat, it's about God's people coming together. And that's First Corinthians twelve, that's twelve through thirty-one that says, we are one body made up of many members. The head can't do it by itself, if the feet, the knees, and the ankles don't work with him, he ain't gonna go nowhere. The back ain't good, and if the back don't work, the knee, the knees and all, that's not, not gonna go nowhere. When we start to put our hidden motives aside, based on the color of our skin, or the amount of money in our bank account, when we put that aside and start working with one another to get this thing done together, then God can say, well done to the city of Shreveport. I left Shreveport, I came back to Shreveport 'cause I believe in Shreveport, I love Shreveport, God bless y'all on this one.
Councilman Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms., Ms. Ruben Small, I don't know if you own to speak today, but if you own to speak, would you say something about your councilman as well? I appreciate it, thank you.
That is led by example, darling.
Thank you so much.
That is boots on the ground.
Thank you. If you not on, Ms. Ruben, I'm gonna call you up anyway so we can say a word. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Tangia D., the plant lady.
That's me.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everyone, how y'all doing this morning? It's the plant lady in the building, um, my name is Tangia Taylor, better known as the plant lady. I live at three-two-three-eight Tower Drive, and, um, Madam Chair in her district. And I just want to say, good morning, everyone, but, uh, I'm, wanna talk about this violence and, uh, what happened. I don't watch TV, but I was sent a lot of things that disturbed me, and, uh, I, I took so many notes and didn't know who to jump off of, piggyback off of. And it's just that, um, everybody asking, everywhere I go, we need a solution, we need a solution. But first, the solution need to start with all of us as. But first, the solution need to start with all of us as organizers, as advocates, as leaders. We all need to come together first before we start on the outside. These young folks, they seeing all of the, all of the disconnect in between everything that goes on between the leaders and the advocates and the organization. We're going to have to bridge these gaps. I used to work in a prison system, one, a maximum security prison. I didn't have no gun, I didn't have no taser, but we had to have some type of interpersonal skills where we can communicate with these individuals on the outside. Yes, the police are overworked and some are underpaid. But, um, also, we have to come together, uh, as a community and help our police officers and, um, and bring this solution together. And how we going to be able to bring that solution together is bringing these young folks to the table and asking them questions, because I don't see none of them to the table or none of them in here speaking on the things that happen in, in their neighborhoods. Uh, we need to start lighting up downtown. In Tampa, you go to New York, downtown is lit up, is vibrant. You see young people walking with, um, their, their, with their children. Uh, I'm scared to take my child, um, downtown because I don't know if I have to run with her or whatever, but, um, that go, crime go on everywhere across the nation, not just in Shreveport. And if we're going to make Shreveport green, um, excuse me, great again, we need to make it green again. We need to bring green spaces, because if you do your research, green uplifts the spirit. And we're going to have to start from the ground up of healing ourselves, and then we'll be able to heal our community. And, um, if you want any solution, we need a, um, a diversion program. We have all these criminals that's in jail, that's just sitting there, that's bar time. Why don't we use them for workforce? Why don't we use those people who on bar time as workforce to give back to our community? My three minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mona Proctor.
My name is Mona Proctor. I live at 102 Took Drive here in Shreveport, Louisiana. I used to be in Plano, Texas, under management training. One of the first things they taught us was, "Keep your eyes open and be alert. Look for dinosaur dragon eggs." And when you find an egg, settle that problem before it becomes a fire-breathing dragon. We've waited too long, because we've had at least three weekends in a row where we had an issue. And we know, that mean, it's good for us. It's, it's good for us. We know where the problems are, and we pretty much have a good idea. Cameras, keep them. Keep them. It means we know what happened in the past. We shouldn't be working from the past. Move forward and put people where the problems have been happening. And I like the gentleman that said, "Even if there's a car there, anymore the tender, the windows are tinted so bad, you can't even tell if there's somebody in it." We bought new cars recently, sheriff and police. Sheriff and police cars. Put the cars and park them. We don't have enough people? Okay, good. Park the car. Another thing that happened, I come to these meetings regularly. When they started promoting harmony and, and humor, they said, "Let's increase the bar time." I've heard on the radio that the bars are open until almost 6:00 AM. I come from a family full of drunks down south. People will do things when they're hyped up on, that they will not normally do. That time limit is not in our best interest. Now you figure that one out. The lady with the lights, I have said that for a long time, "Turn the lights on this city and the cockroaches will disappear." Simple. Let's get some lights on. And I don't mean just downtown. Uh, there are a lot of areas where you will not have theft. I can't keep a lawnmower at my house. I don't care where I put it. They disappear. My neighbor's having trouble with drive-by shootings and her window is being shot out in the car. Other neighbors don't have a car in the morning in the driveway at all. Lights on. There are, uh, other things that I, I wrote down were, what about, uh, we, we hired, we bought a whole lot of cars and we have hired, fired, hired people. But what about that sound issue? I never got a report back on the sound issue. Chief Wayne Smith said he was doing a sound check. I'm still hearing people say, "I can't even sleep. I have an apartment downtown and I can't even sleep over the weekend." Do we get, are we getting any feedback on the thing? I've been coming for over a year. Are we making any progress at all?
Mr. Proctor, your time has expired.
Mr. Dark.
Thank you.
Mr. Dark, you have to respond to Ms. Proctor because all of those are from the administration mail.
Ms. Tashanisha.
We have two more comments after this, then all of your comments will have been heard. And then next will be Chief Wayne.
Good morning. I didn't want to miss up your last name.
Good morning. My name is Tatianisha Kocinski, 3938 Merwin Street. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for calling this emergency meeting, Mayor, as well as Madam Vice Chair and other city councils. Um, I'm here today because we've been talking about this in so many different community organizations that I sit on boards, as well as being a part of. Also, we're coming to the Tuesday Morning Breakfast with, um, my brother Craig Lee. But seeing the fights over years, but the last three weeks have been really crucial because not only were the fights actually done and recorded, which were all laws broken, but the people had no type of empathy or sympathy. Um, you saw one even stand over the gentleman and take a picture. And one of the things that I have learned is that you can't learn how to change something unless you visit other places. I have a home in Blanchard as well, is in West Shreveport. But I go to every neighborhood association to see exactly what's going on. I never judge because you cannot judge unless you have gone. You cannot judge religion unless you have not studied. So what I'm asking today is, is that the first thing we have to do is, and one of the things that, uh, again, I have to give it to my brother Craig Lee, is that we have to clean up first where we are. And that meaning, in every organization that we are in, we all have great programs. I did a program this summer, but it's not about that. We need to try to figure out the problems at hand and take care of them as Madam Chair did this morning about calling this meeting. So the fights is, what I would like to say is, um, we have dads on duty. What about citizens on duty? We have people that have substations. When I went to the A.B. Palmer, uh, Park Neighborhood Association, Chief Smith spoke about having them in every neighborhood that has high crime areas. How about not putting a substation here downtown? Having a person, a officer that sits in there, but not just an officer, have undercover citizens on duty to be trained to actually record, take pictures, even have walkies where they can notify the persons who are in charge that have more, uh, training, like police officers and sheriffs, to be able to come and address those issues. And it's not just only downtown. We need to look at our youth. They gather up on Clydesdale Parkway, whites and blacks, and we don't address that ever. We only post about certain areas and certain people. Also, they had an event down at the area in front of Ms. Cassandra, uh, Restaurant, and it was a homeless person that laid out in the middle of the stage. From my understanding, that group actually had a permit to actually have that down there, but no one removed that man. There was no officer down there, so if you have a permit...
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maki Jackson, I'm 6352, across Wind Road. Thank you guys for having this meeting. Uh, let's be fair, every act of violence first start with a crisis. Before it becomes a headline, a charge, or statistic, it begins as a breakdown in trust, dignity, and a mental stability. That's where crisis management belongs, at the front end of public safety, not as an afterthought. We cannot separate violence prevention and intervention from crisis care. Every violation we see in downtown is rooted in, in the need, excuse me, in the need of a moment of collapse, a person who needs structure, a professional support before they become a threat to themselves or others. That's why cities must invest in managing people's self-identified crisis independently from the systems that has failure systems, right? Not just punishing the outcomes. At Humanity 2020, we don't wait for the system to catch up. We out there, we the team. We intervene early with train teams, dig, and, excuse me, dignify self-person, I mean, self-personal care. We don't just de-escalate, we manage, we restore, we give crisis a plan, and we invite the council to recognize that public safety begins with the crisis management, not just enforcement. We stand before you with warm hands for collaboration. Join our crisis coalition. Let's manage the people before we manage the problem. I have been in this community, I have invested my money in having those de-escalation frontliners. We have invested, we have a certified, uh, uh, credentials just as your law enforcement. Chief Smith had the same training that our responders have as well. We don't get any collaboration. We don't get any emails back. I have spoken with the attorney, I've spoken to you guys, I, I have called. We're not getting any collaboration. You have to trust your people. And I moved here to do this work. I love Shreveport. I moved here and I invested my money in property to prove my matrix, and yet today, do I get anyone to call me to the table? I have to hear this on Facebook. I have called the mayor, uh, Dark, Chief Smith, and everybody and their mama, and I still can't get anyone to sit down and listen to someone that's on the front line that doesn't bring judgment, we bring solution. We bring, and we have actionable change, and we have reported to the state, we have done everything it's supposed to do but to collaborate with the city. And I'm going to yield back. Y'all have a nice day.
Sue Garcia.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Sue Garcia. I live at 837 Captain Shreve Drive in Shreveport. I would like to say, um, that Councilman Green, you said something at the beginning of the meeting. I wholeheartedly agree with you. You said, "The answer to what we need today is prayer." Um, and you said, you said another true statement, I thoroughly, thoroughly agree, that the church needs to do their job. And I am here as a person that, and I have stood before the council before, I came just a few months ago, and I offered my services to you to be one who would pray. And I have been doing that ever since. I hold two positions. The first position I hold is I'm the state leader for Intercessors for America, which is an, which is a national organization, and we have chapters in every state of the United States. It's a 50-year-old organization and it's wonderful. I'm also the city leader of SB Ecclesia. That stands for Shreveport Bojar Ecclesia. As we know, some of you may know, some of you may not know, that ecclesia means church. It's the governing body. We meet monthly and pray for our city. We have been. We try to cover all seven mountains. But I would like to say this, what are we saying when we say we need to pray? Are we saying to God as we pray, "Not our will, but your will"? Are we really seeing ourselves giving God the reins of control? We can't ask for his help. We can pray 2 Chronicles 7:14 all day long, but are we really turning from our wicked ways? To turn away means that our laws reflect the will of God. They reflect us turning away. We can pray all day long, but if our, if we, the prayers and the government leaders aren't together in seeking God's will for our city, nothing is going to change. Our Father will not violate our will. He gives us all free will. He does. If we choose to promote entertainment with extended alcohol drinking hours, we're going to leave our gates of our city wide open. And they're open, they're wide open right now to lawlessness and violence. Do we want our city to be known as being an entertainer, an entertainment hub? Do we want that to be what we're known for? Or do we want our city to be known as a place that has safe, peaceful streets and offers a place for people to thrive and advance in every area of their lives? All seven mountains. I would like to propose this, a rededication gathering, perhaps within this chamber, perhaps under the bridge, where we bring guitars, we bring our voices, we bring our hearts, and we pray with all sincerity, 2 Chronicles 7:14, and we mean it. This rededication ceremony would be a time when we would, today, with all sincerity, say those words. We would not let it be lip service. We would let it be a starting point at this transition point. This is a very, very, very important transition point.
Your time has expired, but I think...
Madam, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am. I, I'd just like to say, sometimes when you listen to the voice of God, you're wondering if that's really his voice. And this morning, when I prayed and I heard the voice of God saying that we need to start praying...
Yes, sir.
Exactly what you said, under the bridge, on the sidewalk, wherever. And so therefore, if in fact, I don't know how many people will join us, but if you would also join us in the middle of the street today for a few minutes, I think what you just requested to God in prayer will start there. And I really believe that it will go out throughout our city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I appreciate it, Councilman Green. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comments.
Okay, we've heard all of the public comments, uh, from the audience that turned in comment cards, and we wanted to make sure that we listened and heard your voice intense.
Shale Holden, she had an online request.
Is Chief Wayne here?
Okay. I was just making sure you were here.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Mayor Arsenault, Council. I am Dr. Shale Holden, 204 Texas Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. As you all are well aware, I'm the owner of Hayes-on-Texas Royalty Cigar and Hookah Lounge and G-Spot Dactego. These three establishments contribute to the life and economy of our downtown district. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council today and to address the recently published inaccurate and misleading statements regarding my businesses and their role in downtown public safety. At Hayes-on-Texas Royalty and G-Spot, the safety and well-being of our patrons, employees, and neighbors is our top priority. We have consistently worked with the Shreveport Police Department, Fire Marshal's Office, and DDA to ensure that we meet or exceed all codes, regulations, and occupancy limits. We, we employ security officers, utilize ID verification systems, and maintain surveillance and crowd control measures to provide a secure environment both inside and immediately outside our establishment. When issues have arisen in the downtown corridor, we have cooperated fully with law enforcement and taken swift corrective action. The suggestion, the suggestion that Hayes is a center of violence is factually incorrect and unfairly damaging to our reputation. Incidents that occur in public spaces downtown often involve individuals who are not patrons of our establishment, and it is inaccurate to, to attribute those actions to Hayes Royalty and/or G-Spot or our staff. We, we take pride in being a responsible business... We take pride in being a responsible business and a willing partner in community safety efforts. We believe that a vibrant, safe downtown depends on collaboration between business owners, city officials, and law enforcement. Hayes-on-Texas Royalty and G-Spot stand ready to continue that partnership. We support policies and initiatives that make our entertainment districts safer and more inclusive, and we remain open to constructive feedback and joint problem solving. Can I get Cedric to join, join me for one second? I want him to read a text message between me and him. Cedric, if you don't mind, from March 20 of 2025. If you'll read that message.
It says, "To confirm, two officers with patrol cars at Hayes, Friday and Saturday, 11:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. at $40 per hour every weekend moving forward. Royalty opens late night, 12:00 midnight to 4:00 a.m. Two officers with patrol cars for $40 per hour every weekend moving forward. Officers will be paid nightly at the end of each shift. Thank you for making this happen."
That is my commitment to downtown Shreveport and the safety of downtown Shreveport. And since March 20th, I've spent over $16,000 of my own money to employ SPD officers on Texas Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holden. Chief Wayne? I said, "Thank you." Chief Wayne? So you've heard the discussion of our constituency and business owners, what we wanted to hear and address the concerns that they have.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We gotta follow the agenda.
That's alright.
We've gotta follow the agenda.
Call, we'll now discuss the following. What am I calling?
The agenda items.
Right. I'm going to do that. Alright. And so, what we have first on the agenda is loitering and fighting on public property. What we're looking at is the solutions for that, so give us your explanation. Okay.
Yeah, we were just looking at the two different agendas, I'm sorry.
So I have this agenda that you all have given me. And it says, "Loitering, fighting on public property."
No, no, that's right, my question was to... Okay, I see, okay, thank you, we were... Yeah, it wasn't showing up on our computer, so I'm sorry.
Apology accepted. Okay. So, we have finished the public comments section, alright? Now the agenda says, "Council will now discuss the following. Number one, if you all say you do not have an agenda, loitering, fighting on public property. What we want to know is what the law says as it relates to that? What do we have in place? How do we successfully intend to execute that?"
Yeah, obviously, fighting on public property or any other property is prohibited by law. Loitering, that is an issue of a lot of controversial discussion because on a public thoroughfare sidewalk, anyone is free to come and roam as they please as long as they are not blocking that thoroughfare. So, loitering is very difficult to enforce, interpret, it depend on how you look at it. I know we have discussion quite often, we get complaints about... I'll give you an example. The Red River District, that someone appears to be unhoused, and they're just sitting there. Well, it's public space. If you're not violating the law, I don't think we have the authority to dismiss you. So I'm still kinda confused about what you mean by loitering. Do you mean people just standing around? What? Give me a clearer...
Let's give an example.
Yes.
If you are loitering on a private business, if you're on a private business parking lot.
Alright, there we go.
If you decide to congregate on that business parking lot, what is the rule for the public and what is the rule for the business owner?
Okay, for the business owner, if it's on public property, SPD cannot be the complainant because we're not the one who's directly in control of that.
Is this private or public? Private property or public property?
Private property.
Private property, okay, you said public.
On private property. On private property, SPD of the City of Shreveport does not own it. We are not the one who is directly in control, so that owner of that property or someone who has legal control has to direct us to tell those people to leave. The other option is, if it's his commercial property, now mind you, commercial property, then we have a program in place, a sign initiative, which a business owner can register that property with the Shreveport Police Department, sign an affidavit. At the beginning, where people enter that property, put up a sign that says, "No trespassing, this property is registered with the Shreveport Police Department", then we can intervene on their behalf and instruct people who is not there to legitimately do business to leave. And if you refuse to leave, we can arrest you for entering, remaining, or trespassing with the owner's authority.
So when that, if there are individuals inside of a private commercial business...
Inside.
Inside.
Yes.
Of a private commercial business.
Yes.
And then they step outside of that business onto public property.
Public property.
Is that the responsibility of the business owner? Or then does that become the responsibility of what happens in the street of the City of Shreveport?
When they step out on public property, then they become our responsibility to enforce the public laws, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, to go a step further on that, our sidewalks now, and a lot of what was seen on the video, the crowd was not quite as large as what it appeared on the video at street level. From what we saw the video yesterday from the Real Time Crime Center.
Right.
From above, it was a large crowd, but it wasn't like the sidewalks were full.
That is correct.
So my question is, if the sidewalks do become full and you are not able to walk up and down the sidewalks, at what point does the police department get involved? And then secondary to that, at what point does the police department get involved once those crowds on the sidewalks, which we have seen in the past, where on the sidewalks they start to get into the streets? When does the police get involved? And then, one other question. I was told that there were several motorcycles that were parked on sidewalks down there. At what point do we get involved in that? Because I know what you're saying, it's hard to get someone for loitering on a sidewalk that's public. But if they're just standing there congregating and not allowing the free flow of people to walk, I think that's a problem.
I agree with you 100%, that could in fact be a problem, yes sir. And blocking of public passage is strictly prohibited in any fashion, so a vehicle couldn't legally park on the sidewalk. You are correct. And people crossing the street should be crossing within the designated crosswalk.
Which they weren't in the video.
That is correct, yes sir.
But it goes back to, we can say all of this is illegal, and that, but if we don't have the manpower out of cars, like what Councilwoman Taylor has said,
Yeah.
walking, how do we combat it? And I think that's a task that the mayor and the police chief are gonna have to come up with a solution on, because what my fear is, if you have people that are just outside of a club, and I will say this, I think, go a step further with the club owners. If you notice outside of your club that they are congregating to the point where I think they need to call the police and say, "Hey, we've got a large crowd that's not moving out here, we need to move them on." I don't think it's the club owner's responsibility to go out there and break it up by any means. But I do think it is their responsibility to say, "Hey, we've got a crowd growing out here, they're not patrons," because I think we all can agree that 90% of the troublemakers that are going on are not patrons inside of these bars or clubs. They're coming down there because they don't have anyplace else to go, which has been mentioned by a lot of people,
Sure.
that they don't have anyplace else to go, so they bring their own alcohol, and they're sitting on the side of the street drinking alcohol and cutting up. And we've just gotta figure out a way to get these people to move on, I think. I think that's the... But I do think that there does come a level of responsibility where the club owner needs to call and say, "Hey, we've got a large crowd congregating out here, let's move on." Hopefully, the Real Time Crime Center will pick some of that up as well, but I don't know if that's possible. But anyway, I just wanted to get a clarity on that, that I'm not talking about people freely walking up and down the sidewalk, I'm talking about whenever they begin to set up camp on the sidewalk, and you can't walk down the sidewalk. I don't think that's fair to other patrons of these establishments. I'm not gonna walk through a huge crowd to go into Hayes or Royalty or San Bar or anything like that. If I've got people congregating on the, I'm gonna go and I'm gonna go somewhere else.
Attorney Edwards, what does the law say?
Regarding responsibility or regarding obstructing a public passage or roadway?
Regarding what Councilman Butcher just said. As it relates to crowd control on a sidewalk, on a public sidewalk, what does the law say?
The law says that the public can be in a public sidewalk. It also says that you cannot obstruct any sidewalk, street, highway, bridge, alley, or roadway.
Okay, so what we saw in the middle of the street was obstruction.
That's correct.
So therefore, the consequences of that is what?
That's a misdemeanor offense.
Okay.
There is also a state statute for obstructing roadways and public passageways.
Which these are state highways, by the way.
Right, so it's both. This is a violation of both the Title 14 criminal provision as well as the city ordinance, both of them are gonna be misdemeanors.
Okay, so in the midst of when those individuals are obstructing the flow of traffic at that time, and then they add another layer on that obstructing by fighting in the middle of the intersection, state highway, public street, what is the authority of the Shreveport Police Department?
They absolutely have the authority to arrest at that point for simple battery as well as disturbing the peace, obstructing a public roadway. They got a lot of, there's a lot of tools in the tool belt.
Okay, so in adding to that, then we, then they are actually assaulting somebody. So they're impeding, they are assaulting. What's the next step? Again, is that part of their being arrested? Those charges can be added on there, causing bodily harm of another individual? What does the police have the authority to do?
Yes, that continues to stack potential reasons for arrest and charge.
Because it is a state highway, do you all have the managerial authority over those streets? Or does it fall under the auspices of Louisiana State Police?
The state of Louisiana subsidizes each officer's salary, and also that gives us the authority to go along with that to enforce any law on a state highway here within the city limits of Shreveport. So in other words, we have just as much authority as the state police to enforce the laws, either state or city ordinances on any street within the city limits.
Okay, so we've seen obstruction, we've seen assault, we've seen those two things. So Mayor, my question to you, from the council's perspective, since we don't have any ability to enforce this, it would be up to you all to be able to do this. My ask of you all is to make sure that these individuals are arrested for impeding that particular process. Let me finish. And anybody else that does that, because we have to take those particular steps and make that example of what's happening. That's the only way that we're going to be able to send a message. We have camera footage from the Real Time Crime Center. We have to do that. And we can't sit over here and say, "Oh, they were in the business and they came out and blah, 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 in the business." No. The responsibility also lies with that individual. Because before you can change anybody, anything biblically, that relies on us, the sole individual, to make the change. And so we are governed, because there's a separation of church and state. We are governed by the laws of this land. And so at this particular point, my first step to you all is to make sure that what they did, and in committing crimes in correspondence with the laws of this state of Louisiana and the City of Shreveport, that they need to be arrested.
Sure.
And one other thing that I just got clarity from the city attorney on, the gentleman that was unconscious in the middle of the road, that's not simple battery.
Correct.
That's aggravated battery, which is a higher offense, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And thank you so much, Council Chair and Council people for bringing some attention to where responsibility needs to lie.
Correct.
Now certainly, SPD, we wanna do our part, certainly we do, without a doubt. And there's always room for improvement. But please consider those where responsibility lies. SPD did not start the fight.
Correct.
We were down there trying to make our city safe and make sure everybody could have a good time, get back and forth to their cars. We knew none of these people that were fighting nor played no part in that. So I just think some responsibility lies with the individuals themselves to control their behavior, to come downtown to our various businesses and establishments with the intent to have a great time and to leave and go back home and not harm anybody or not be harmed.
And Chief, I understand that, but I think sometimes when they've been allowed to a certain extent to run amok, and it's not... A lot of times you don't even know what's going on. That's why I think the chairwoman is so adamant, "We need to send a message, we're not gonna put up with it."
Right.
I agree 100%, 100%. The first call that came into SPD headquarters on that night when the fight occurred, guess where the call came in from? Real Time Crime Center. That's who reported it. Then it began to be followed by citizens reporting.
I would probably also add that the people that were driving on Texas Street and Spring Street probably called too.
Those were the concerns.
Because they couldn't drive down the street.
Yes ma'am, that is correct. That is correct.
That's one thing that I definitely want us to do, and not just for what we saw for that weekend, but continuously around. Upon the fact of you all initiating your vice squad, and that vice squad has to happen and be continuous. And I know that we talk about the limited officers that we have, but we gotta do some restructuring. Give me 20 strong officers that wanna see this stuff and is hungry to make this stuff right. And they wanna be boots on the ground, literally. And if they only tasked with that area, give me that. While at the same time, I think the mayor administration have to look at different things of when it comes to money for you all. We not planning, the council doesn't make the plans. The council does the allocation with what is there.
Sure.
And so from this point, and what some people fail to understand is that this council has allotted a ton of money.
Yes ma'am.
For public safety.
Yes ma'am.
But the execution has to come from you all.
Yes ma'am.
I think that Councilman Brooks made a very valid point. Maybe it's time to look at some of the people that are eight to five and putting them out there. I mean, I think that's a very valid point, and I think we've said that over and over again. I don't wanna, we're not police officers, and we're not the mayor, and we're not telling... But from an outsider looking in and from my constituency... and from my constituents, that's what they're saying. Let's take some officers out of an eight to five job and put them downtown for a little bit.
We have no, we have no department within our department that is not at least twenty, thirty, fifty percent.
Under.
Under what they need to efficiently operate. So in other words, if you want more people out of the offices to go somewhere else, thinking about what you giving up. Do you want less detectives investigating violent crimes that occur? Do you want less detectives, uh, investigating the burglaries that occur?
No, what I, what I want is for us to look at the numbers that we have and restructure accordingly. That's what I want, but I'm not your boss.
Sure. There, there is no one within our.
And then at the same time, what I do want for your bosses to look at is how do we implement a structure of, of dollars or where we fall short? And also what I want to ask of your bosses to look at the supplemental pay that y'all get from the state and see if there's an increase for that. And then I want them to ask the federal government to give us the dollars that we need in order to execute.
Sure, sure.
That is what I want, but as I say, I can only ask.
Sure, sure.
I intend to ask my congressman this evening.
Sure. Well, the, the other agencies have been great in supporting us when we asked for help. Our city marshal's office, the Caddo Sheriff Department, uh, the Louisiana State Police. As a matter of fact, Friday night, the Louisiana State Police, pretty much the whole troop G, nine state troopers were in our downtown area working, nine. So they had to pull that nine out of regions of our parish to come in the city and help me. Uh, I was out there Saturday night myself till after three in the morning and had the opportunity, uh, to stop and think about four of the troopers that I ran across that was patrolling, making traffic stops in our downtown area. Stop and tell them thank you for coming and helping us out. Our auxiliary corps was out both Friday night and Saturday night downtown. As I made my report to the mayor, we had in excess of twenty plus officers that were in fact boots on the ground. But you all, you got to stay with your vehicle to be mobile. And we came prepared today, and maybe you don't need to see it, to show you what's recorded in the CAD system of the activities that were taking place Friday night downtown. Because I don't want anyone leaving from here today thinking that the officers were not working. They were moving from event to event. Uh, August the fifteenth of two thousand and fifteen changed the history of policing here in Shreveport. At a residence in Council District G, one of our police officers, Thomas Levalle, responded to an incident alone. He didn't make it away. From that date on, around our country, but most importantly here in Shreveport, officers are not dispatched, single officers. So in other words, our responsible, where we used to have twenty officers available to respond, now we have ten, cause at least two responds. In the, uh, entertainment area downtown, where people, uh, behavior or their judgment is obstructed by their pleasures, where a single incident of very minor can erupt and turn into something very, uh, very civilly troubling at any time. Now there need to be at least four or five officers that respond to a crowded situation with the protection of their vehicle to try to make things safe. It's more to it than on the surface than meets the eye to try to keep everybody safe.
I don't think you get any argument for us up here.
Yeah.
That's why we tip generally, one hundred percent.
Thank you so much.
On public safety, that's why we continuously.
Thank you so much.
Ask you what you need. Tell us what you need. That's why we say it all the time. Tell us what you lacking. Tell us what it is that we can restructure and, and I know what the main thing is. But until that main thing occurs, tell us what we can equip you with. So when you go out, because you had this this past weekend, you got a concert this weekend, it's gonna migrate into downtown. You know, Hayes wasn't open.
That is correct.
Other clubs, another club, I think Ten Ten was not open.
That is correct.
We had other clubs down the street. But as we also witnessed, we saw fights where they were not adjacent to any club.
We have it, yes ma'am, that's correct.
That's what I was gonna say.
You are so correct.
Wasn't adjacent to any club. And so again, we have to be very careful with that.
Yes.
But we're on the, we want to change that level of perception. And so again, that means collaborative partnerships with the sheriff, city marshal, ATF, EEA, probation and parole, because maybe they'll see some of their friends out there curating acts, and may have to go back up and send them to another home.
Yes.
We have to look at all of those things and all of those collaborations, but the, the permanent message that has to, that has to take place is this is intolerable.
I agree one hundred percent.
Or any other community in Shreveport.
Yes ma'am, we're gonna, uh, step it up from what we had this, this past weekend. Hopefully have that many or, or more with some additional resources. So stricter enforcement will take place.
Okay.
But keep this in mind, please keep this in mind. When we step up our game, it increases the likelihood that you'll hear about it.
Right.
That's, you know.
Support us, you know, will you frontline support us when we do our very best?
Okay, Councilwoman Bowman.
And Chief, that was gonna be my next comment for the record. When we ask, we have to know what comes with it. Because we had this one incident on video, but I know for, for sure, by the Louisiana State Fair, they had multiple fights outside of the fair. So you had manpower there. You had kids that were sixteen and seventeen year olds that was vandalizing people's homes, ringing their doorbell at two AM. So we had a lot of things going on in this city Friday that was not on video. I had people calling me because we had problems in the neighborhood with kids everywhere. But at some point, we gotta hold these parents accountable.
Yes ma'am.
And we will also need to have a curfew law, because a lot of those kids that were fighting, they were not adults.
Yes ma'am, I agree.
Some of these were kids.
Yes ma'am, I agree.
So the, the issue is, is, is more than downtown. And I, absolutely. I, 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 I commend you on everything you do, because Friday night, everyone wants to complain about the clubs. They had house parties that were out of control all over this city. It was a Halloween night that was gruesome. You had fights all over this city. You go on Pine Road and Buncombe Road, in that parking lot, they had fights there. Uh, they just, they just didn't get video. So I commend you, I think we need to come up with a couple of plans, but it's more than downtown. It's just that they've been videoing downtown. And if you look at some of the videos, there appear to me that some of them started out like they were not even real. Some people get likes on these videos on social media, and then they can turn to violence. But some of these things are not even true. They do them for likes on social media, and it makes our city look bad. I mean, you could look at some of the video and tell it was manufactured, it wasn't, it wasn't real.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all of you, uh, viewing the video from Real Time Crime that was not cut, unobstructed. It gave an aerial view, and I think that helped you to see things a little bit better, uh, than it did. Uh, you know, from what we saw, the nucleus was outside of, of Club Royal. The club ain't had nothing to do with it. It was outside where people just decide to, you know, have a fistic encounter, and it just multiplied, multiplied, multiplied. But, uh, we have our best investigators, all of them are really, really good, to be frank and honest. Uh, they're making some good progress, uh, in finding out who all the people were that was involved. Uh, and thank you, DDA and the downtown businesses for supporting crime stoppers in their effort to help us identify these people. Thank y'all so much, and I think before long, we're gonna have some folks arrested.
Councilman Green, Councilman Butcher.
Uh, Madam Chair, I just want to say, Chief, I really appreciate you all, you all doing a great job. But also, I hear what you're saying, cause there's a saying that say, please hear what I'm not saying. But you're saying that when we do our job, and when we do what, when you all do what we're asking you to do, then I hear you clearly saying to people and to the public, don't bash the police. Because we can't have it both ways. We can't have you doing your job, real policing, and then when you do it, then we show a video that say the police was bashing the police. I'm one hundred percent in support. Also, while you're talking, I wish we could do a, uh, some kind of study as to why people don't wanna be police anymore. Because I know that you all are trying to recruit everybody that you can. The sheriff department is trying to recruit everybody, sure the city marshal. But the public has to understand that this generation don't wanna be police anymore. And you all just have the task of, we keep talking about we're short. With this generation that we have, if we keep talking about being short as to say we're going to get up to that number, I don't think we'll ever get up to that number again, but you all have created a strategy to help us to be where we are. So, but I think we show a, a false narrative when we say, well, we one, seven, eight short, or we whatever short. That short is gonna be there because young people, medium aged people, they just don't wanna do your job. And I commend all of you that's doing it. I commend all, the few that you all get that wanna be police, I commend them. But the fact of the matter is, people don't wanna be police anymore. I don't know if it's the pay, I don't know if it's the bashing, I don't know what it is. But you have to speak to that to let people know that you are doing your best to get more officers, but they just won't come.
We, uh, have a, an academy graduation that's gonna be coming up very soon. Uh, we have twelve candidates that are in academy right now. And within a couple of weeks of graduating, uh, we are so excited that this is going to occur. Uh, so all of you will be invited to that graduation. Try your best to come and let them know how much you appreciate them. Uh, but you know, it's taken that twelve about four months to get to that point. And we, our attrition rate, sometime we're not able to, uh, adequately go ahead of attrition rate or keep up with it. Let me say that, but y'all pray for this twelve, that they make it through this last couple of weeks of, of hurdle. Help us out.
Thank you, Councilman Butcher.
Just real quick, Chief, I, I wanna tell you, you know, um, most everything that I ask you, I, I've already asked you. But I do it in public because I'm getting the questions from, from our constituents.
Sure.
So that's, it, it, you know, I, I don't want you to think I'm, I'm bombarding you with the same question over and over again. But I want people to hear it from your mouth as opposed from my mouth.
Yes.
I think that's important. And then the other thing, Councilman Green brings up a very valid point. I had somebody from Grambling reach out to me the other day, and, uh, I, I was unaware they have a PhD program in criminal justice over there.
That's correct.
Uh, their suggestion was, why, why don't we do some studies? Uh, let those, let those graduate students at, at Grambling do some studies about, you know, even operations and what's making people do this, and then why, why, or what can we do to recruit younger officers, good, good younger officers?
I would be delighted. We will contact, uh, Grambling and see about getting that underway. I know my recruiters do make frequent trips to Grambling to all their job fairs and things like that, but.
But for a thesis or, or study or something like that for PhD, it may not be a bad idea.
Oh, I agree one hundred percent. Uh, this past summer, when we had the summer interns, I had an intern from LSU Baton Rouge and one from, uh, Centenary, and that was their summer commitment to me to do a study to help us understand why people cruise, why people go to Ford Park and other park. And let me tell you, the results were very enlightening.
Cause we like cruising.
Yeah, they made an awesome presentation to my command staff, and I love those kind of independent.
We would love, we would love to be involved in it too. Once you get the information, let us, let us know, cause then, then the mayor can, you know, make some policies and let us, you know, help fund them.
Y'all must not remember, Bonnie Moore came with that, because there was supposed to be a collaboration between Southern Centenary and LSU S.
I remember something like that.
And so I think it's at that particular point in time, it's just to get it rolled out.
Sure, sure.
So.
Well, you know, if, if anybody knows of special events that are happening downtown, that's very important that we know about it ahead of time and that we don't learn about it at the very last minute, which sometime doesn't give us adequate time to, to plan for it. It's important that, you know, the special event that you get properly permitted, because my officers are on that parade task force, then we know what's ahead of us and can help to plan for it. Uh, we've been really, really, uh, focusing some of our attention on the vendors, because you certainly are correct. That draws people not patronized businesses, but to patronize those businesses. Uh, and we've made several, several of them were cited this past weekend and told to leave. Uh, so we've been working in the downtown area to make it better, to reduce just the hanging out.
Okay.
But we got a long ways to go.
So Chief, you have the immediate strategies to strengthen public safety.
Yes ma'am.
That's number two on the agenda item, and those are the things that you are looking at and implementing. So what I've heard you say is that investigation still continues for the individuals who created the act.
Yes.
That implemented the act, and so you all look for a risk warrant for that. Number two, you're going to strengthen, um, the plan that you had. And this is what I want you all to understand. We can plan, and so we have to admit when we failed in that plan. And so we have to go back to the table, it's just as Mr. Lee said, and wrap up and look at and see what did we miss? So we can improve upon that and do better. And so listening to those things are what we have to go in and implement, and that is what I'm hearing that you sent. And that is not a temporary thing, at what you all are looking at. It is ongoing to build that level of sustainability. You just ask the public to be a part of this process, to inform you all of what events that you may see happening in downtown and around the city. So you would be actually know that you're permitted and try to allow individuals to know that ahead of time, so they will be able to. Part of the fifty-six point plan that was instituted, uh, that was, uh, brought before Mayor Glover was one thing that you all wanted business owners to do is that if they threw somebody out of their business for being disruptive, that they contact the police. But who is the point of contact when they call for the police? Because is there somebody that you have on the squad? Is there a community liaison officer? Who would be the point of contact that I think that is something that's gonna have to be worked out as well, once they know that? So as soon as you can get that information out there, I think that's vitally important. Of when the community asks, what is it can you do? That's one thing that you can turn around and that you can do.
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm very familiar with the fifty-six point plan, uh, yeah, been in forty-six years, so naturally I was here when that was implemented. And I was here when, uh, the Red River District, when Commerce Street, when the city was really, really building momentum down in that area. So I'm very familiar with that plan and what we done back then to help its success, very familiar with it.
Yes, Councilman Green.
Chief, uh, also. Chief, uh, also, you have an awesome tool in your toolbox. I think if you would drive that Command Center downtown.
It'll be there Friday and Saturday night.
It is, those of you that don't know, it is the best thing since sliced buttermilk. I think that will do, I mean, it's amazing. It, uh.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if you bring that up, uh, did I say buttermilk? I didn't.
Buttermilk is not smooth. Buttermilk is not smooth.
It'll, it'll be there.
Buttermilk pie.
Well, you're changing thinking, you're changing. Maybe I've been here too long, but anyway, Chief. Chief, but if you bring that Command, I have faith in that Command Center, I promise you. And you all that have not witnessed it, y'all need to, I mean, go inside of it. It is a awesome piece of equipment.
It will start at Municipal Auditorium. I understand there's a vent there and it would move from there downtown. And, uh, when you see it moving, it's, it's, it's meaning business.
Oh, my goodness.
Everybody need to keep that in mind. May not be the right time to, to go inside. May not be the right tour for you, but when it's moving, it's meaning business.
That bobcat down there.
Yeah, the bob, yeah, bear cat.
Bear cat.
We call it the petty wagon.
Chief Smith?
Yes, sir.
This might be the part of meeting where you don't say thank you. But question one, I think, uh, Councilman Green's looking at my list. Where was the command bus for Halloween?
Where was it for Halloween?
Yeah.
Uh, it was in the garage.
Any reason?
No, sir.
Okay. You didn't expect Halloween night to be busy in the clubs?
No, sir.
You did not?
When you look at the film, you did, you see that it wasn't. My assumption was not incorrect. Halloween night is busy throughout the community. It generally makes no difference.
Halloween night is the second busiest night in the club business for adults.
So we didn't see it downtown. Maybe you're right. Right, you're in that business, so you know better than I do.
Please stop with the outburst.
Yeah.
Okay. We had a meeting, uh, Director Glover, Spar, uh, Drayton Dunn, and one of your captains and lieutenants last week, planning for this upcoming weekend, which is now past, which is Halloween weekend.
Sylvan Sanchez.
Yes, sir. Your Captain Silva told us, I believe, that you had redirected 11 officers to, to downtown to the, I think you redirected the DWI Task Force.
That is correct.
Downtown.
We had 28 SPD personnel that was downtown Friday night, 28.
Okay. I'm still a little confused. I, I think we've all watched the video. Or where were they pertaining to the corner of Texas and Spring?
I can tell you exactly where they were. If you want to put it up. I kind of felt that was gonna, someone was gonna ask that question, so I came prepared. I can tell you exactly what was going on. Ready? He'll get it where you can see it in just a minute, but at about 11:20, so I'm gonna start before midnight. Officers addressed food truck violations in the 400 block of Commerce Street. Citations were issued. 12:27, officer responded to a disorderly person at Deja Vu located in 200 block of Commerce Street, and arrest was made. Keep in mind, when an arrest is made, that is not like giving a traffic citation. When an arrest is made, and I say arrest, that ties up an officer for quite a bit of time. The person gotta be searched, handcuffed, report gotta be written, they gotta be taken and booked into the city jail. So it ain't snapping your fingers and it's over. 12:31, officer initiated a traffic stop at Commerce Street in Fannin. Vehicle was determined to be stolen with, and firearms were recovered. Arrest made. By these arrests, that is taking officers from downtown to the city jail. All right, 12:38, we're into, uh, Saturday morning. Officer responded to a 911 hang-up call at 202 Texas Street. 1:23 AM, officers transitioned, uh, the mounted, I had two horses down there at Texas and Spring Street. At 1:23, the officers transitioned to mounted from, uh, crowd control at Texas and Spring Street. At 2:14 AM, uh, mounted officers repositioned at Travis Street and Commerce Street where there was additional crowd for patrol coverage. 2:31 AM, officer responded to a large fight at Fannin Street and Commerce. 2:37 AM, the mounted officer located a female laying in the street at Market Street and Texas Street. Uh, the female was unconscious. Female was transported by the Freeport Fire Department. Uh, when you looked at the video from Real Time Crime Center, you saw lights flashing in the background. That was the officers and the fire department in that exact same block, less than a couple hundred feet from where the fight occurred.
Chief, real, real quick, one question about that. At that point, none of the officers that were downtown knew what had.
In there in the street. At 2:47 AM, officer responded to another large fight at Spring Street and Texas Street. At the same time, the located officer located a female experiencing a, a seizure and rendered first aid at this, the very exact same time. 2:49, officer responded to 451 Clyde Fenn Parkway for another 911 hang-up. 3:07 AM, officer responded to 400 block of Commerce Street for a reportable female struck by a vehicle. 3:08 AM, officer conducted a traffic stop 425 Market Street and made an arrest, an outstanding warrant. 3:23 AM, officer responded to 420 Commerce Street for yet another fight. 4:02 AM, officer responded to 315 Clyde Fenn Parkway, Samstown, for a disorderly person. And I think I'll stop at that point.
It was just downtown.
All my officers were busy, busy. And keep in mind, as I said earlier, in that environment, we don't respond one and two. We'll respond as many deep as possible, cause things can erupt in such a minute. You know, you never, never can tell. And we take our vehicles because that is our best shield of covering if things go bad. You're taught all over the world in law enforcement to put the biggest, strongest, deepest objects between you and gunfire, which is your car and that your car's block, which will stop anything that anybody has got of us. So officers were busy and I am so sorry that they weren't right there visible when this thing erupted, but they were in the same block attending to a medical emergency. RTC, Real Time Crime Center, that you fund, was the one, first ones who detected it and called in because we had hired back for overtime two Real Time Crime Center people that their total function for Friday and Saturday night was to watch the cameras in the downtown area and make immediate notification when they observed something that was unusual. You know what is not unusual about downtown? When clubs close or people get out, lots of people crossing the street, coming out of a business. That is, that's not unusual. That's common. That's what happens when you open the door and, uh, Councilman Brooke, you can chime in it. When you close the doors, you're standing there. What do people do? Generally, they leave. And they leave in numbers of people. But what followed that was extremely abnormal and just will not, not be tolerated, without a doubt.
Thank you, Chief.
And if you do the timeline, officers were on, on scene within two minutes and 30. Two minutes and 30 seconds from when we received notification, three officers arrived on the scene.
And, and.
That's a quicker response than, is any fire department people there? Quicker than the fire department gets.
Hey, no, no.
Quicker than y'all get to the, I had to throw a shot at it.
No, don't say that. Don't say that.
I can't wait for Chief to get back. I can't wait for Chief.
Uh, you know, it, and I, I watched the video myself over the weekend, and it seemed like forever.
Absolutely.
But when we sit there and looked at it and put a real clock on it from the time that the fight started, myself and Councilwoman Taylor were in there, and we watch it, and it's right now. You know, I don't know if they got out of the car at three minutes, but they were pulling up on scene. And the scary part about it was, and we talk about morality and what these kids are doing, it didn't look like it even scared them.
It didn't.
You know, the cops pull up and, you know, I can tell you, I got pulled over one time downtown when I was in high school. It terrified me.
Yes.
Uh, but they had no fear. They just, they just kept on. So.
And please understand that when they did and us watching the video and what we were looking at on the other video, they didn't call the paramedics for the young man. He was pulled into a car and taken away.
He was there one second, car pulls up, door opens up, they pull him in the car and they take off.
The other young lady with the seizure, they took her away. They picked her up when they noticed that she was having it and they took her away. And we didn't see an ambulance for the other person that was in. The only, uh, call that we saw was the young lady that was on the other end of Texas Street that was laid out.
Texas Market down there.
So.
I have one more question, Madam here.
Yes.
Uh, Chief Smith, when a, when a business hires off-duty officers in a, in a marked vehicle, um, when there's a call, uh, do they, do they have to leave that? When they're working, when they're not being paid by SPD, when they're being paid by the business? Do they have to leave that business and respond to a call?
Uh, no, sir. If it's life or death, something and it's nearby, I think it would be in, uh, the best taste to do that. But if they're hired by you exclusively to work at your establishment, uh, them in that vehicle should be there for the time that, you know, you employ them. But knowing police officers the way I do, if someone not too far from me acts for Signal 50 or there's some serious, very serious, you can fire me when you get back, but I'm going to the aid of my brother officer.
Thank you.
That's, that's just the way, where we are.
Chief, I can attest to that fact because on Sundays, we have a police officer at the church. And there have been some incidents.
Yes.
Uh, that happened and the police officer left to take, to assist another officer, but he reported back to say, hey, I had to leave because such and such was going on and it was too much for that officer and they didn't have backup, so I had to leave.
Thank you.
Because my situation was not serious. He was just sitting there. So after he finished with whatever was going on, he was back on the parking lot and I could check it on the camera.
Fire me if you will. You know, one of the agreements for officers to have home storage units, you're encouraged, uh, to go to the grocery store, to go to the gym, to go to church, if you will. But anytime you are behind the wheel of that vehicle, you are on call and you respond or assist whatever emergency is there before you.
Chief, Agenda Item Number Three, Coordination with Law Enforcement.
Uh, we, we, we coordinate with the City Marshal, with Caddo Parish Sheriff, uh, the Louisiana State Police.
Hold on one second. Dr. Bell. Dr. Bell, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for coming to the meeting on today to ensuring that this is a priority for you and First Methodist. And thank you for doing everything that you're doing. Hey, Commissioner Carthon, um, I want to thank you for that. And hopefully this isn't your last meeting.
Thank you.
But we coordinate our efforts between all of the resources that are available for us here in Freeport. Uh, and that includes the feds, but Real Time Enforcement Authority with generally the things that you see, that would be, uh, SPD, the Marshal's Office, the Caddo Sheriff's Department, and LSP. We're the uniform, the boots on the ground, and we have a great relationship. I have never yet asked any of these other agencies, uh, for help, that they have not come through the best that they could. Uh, and I'm, I'm so thankful for that relationship. And that's not a long-grown idea. That's just a matter of picking up the phone and says, uh, Captain Trey Strickland with the State Police, we got something going on this weekend. Can you lend me any help? Sure, Chief, I'll get back with you in a few minutes. He called back and says, we got you. Boots on the ground, I'll be there. And that's the kind of relationship that, that we have. Uh, we share resources. Matter of fact, one of our canines helped, uh, LSP with a subject who was in flight, who got away, well, at least he thought he did, when he went under the house until one of our wonderful canine broke his way through the skirting and introduced himself. We, we got, that's the kind of relationship we all have. If, if I need anything they've got, it's coming my way and vice versa.
So in that added support for law enforcement, I think that is one other thing that we have to add. Um, and I'm going to ask you all for this, is to add your drones.
Okay.
Add your drones to.
Got you.
What you have going on downtown in any other area where there is a large crowd.
We'll do it.
Because I think that's a significant part of the process.
We'll do it. Our drone technology, this is our Starlink. It directly, uh, real-time feeds whatever data straight back to that nice command vehicle. Officers standing even on the outside can see it displayed up on the screen. So we'll definitely do that, not a problem.
I want to reinforce, uh, Agenda Item Number Four, reinforced partnership with community stakeholders. Majority of these people in this room today wanted to see what they could provide and what they could give to, uh, to assist. So what happened downtown won't happen again, but also wouldn't happen in their neighboring neighborhoods because I think that's critical. And I think those particular community stakeholders come from all walks of life. This is not individuals that are at whatever level. They are though, the true boots on the ground. So I would like for you to reinforce that. I would like for us to take our very own personal pledge of what we want to do in order to build our city up and change the narrative, not move with the narrative of what you see on social media or any, you know, other news outlet. We create our own narrative when it comes to the city of Freeport. So will you please reinforce that partnership?
Absolutely. The partnerships are great. Uh, being the eyes and ears for us is very, very important. And there's a, a portion of all of this that goes back to the home that I think everybody can help us with. There are a lot of things that's happening that probably would be unacceptable if you knew about it. Our, our family members, our young children, in many cases, they're one way in our sight and there's something else outside of our sight. I see things the Saturday night when I was down here that was happening. I guarantee you, my granddaughter wouldn't be, be out at that time of morning participating in those kind of activities. But those young people are someone, sons and daughters, uh, and children that are doing things that you don't approve of, but the chances are sometime you don't know about it. So where there needs to be more trust and conversation about what's appropriate and what not between family members and other younger family members. I think where we fail in life sometime as a society, we, uh, let people go too quick when we think that they may be mature and ready enough for the world and the chances are not, they're not quite ready to make the best judgment decisions. Um, I'm asked quite often, why don't you hire police officers under 21? And I say, well, the chances are you ain't gonna find nobody in the world that probably will because of the scientific studies that clearly indicates that even at 21, your judgment, your decision-making ability is still. that even at twenty-one, your judgment, your decision-making ability is still getting better. Below that, it's still too much of a risk that you make bad judgment calls. So please talk to your, your children, know where your children are at three o'clock in the morning. And you know what? The chances are good that many of them, that some I saw were not of age to be out. But they were out. The family members, you know, ones that was not of age, that should have been home, that probably had told you they spending the night, uh, you know, over to James Green's grandchildren's house, but they wouldn't.
They wouldn't, eh, man.
Trust me, I'm speaking from experience, I've been there. Get me once, but you won't get me twice, if you know what I mean.
Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Chief Smith, so the mobile command center will be out this weekend?
That is correct.
Okay, Friday and Saturday?
That is correct.
And the, the concert's Saturday?
That is correct.
Okay, you said you were gonna start at the concert and then make your way.
Saturday night, we will.
Oh, but you're gonna be downtown Friday night?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, don't be surprised if you see me at the concert.
Come on, come on.
Just saying.
Chief, if you need somebody to count the commands, then I'll be watching them.
Chris, sign him up, we need him. You got CDL, we need you.
Last thing on the agenda, uh, Chief, Councilman Butcher, was, is another weapon in your arsenal. Follow up with DeSoto Parish about the helicopter.
I talked with, uh, Sheriff Richardson this morning. Uh, that helicopter is available this weekend. Not the new helicopter, but he has a pilot and a flight officer who had fifteen years' experience with SPD that is willing to be up in the air Friday and Saturday night.
I'll reach out to him.
And I told him that we would have the meeting and that we would get Marcus and his attorney, I think it's Nikki Buckle, to to start the process. I think with an emergency situation, we can, we can do that. But he's willing to send us a deputy and a helicopter and a pilot over the weekend.
We'll reach out to him, thank you for that.
Thank you.
For that help.
I wanna take this opportunity for telling you all, where you all sitting here three hours from ten o'clock to one o'clock, actually to listen and to be a part of what's going on in the city of Shreveport. I'm sorry that I cannot feed you, I don't have any money to be able to do that. I would have asked Ms. Yolanda to at least bring a pound cake or Italian cream cake, something. Okay, for you all to have, but I didn't ask her that today. But, um, I think that it was very important to squash whatever negative narrative that somebody had placed out there, although we saw the negativity. I think that what is most powerful is that we look at what we do going forward and what we continuously do. These are your stakeholders. These are the individuals that wanna be a part of the city of Shreveport. Because Sam was talking and I told him I'll see you at the council meeting.
That's right.
Okay? These are the things that we have to do continuously, we cannot do them by ourselves. Okay, and so the approaches that we take, that I do want us to talk to each other and not at each other. Yes, you will feel our anger and our frustration when we see things that happen. But when we learn and when we see things, that when we know better, then we do that better. And you all can take back the facts of what it is that you heard back to the community because you were here to look at our, and reemphasize our commitment to the city of Shreveport. And that encompasses all of the city of Shreveport. So former mayor, Representative Glover, thank you. Thank you for your staff, Lauren Davison and Jamie Landry for coming down here, sitting through this. I know you made, you know, your, your behinds may be hurting a little bit, but now you can get up and stretch out a little bit. And yes, Tim Huck, no, I've never had a phone call with you, but I will from this point on, sir. But make sure we talking to each other. I also want to re-emphasize the fact again, that I will say this about this club. Hayes was not open, ten-ten was not open during this particular point in time. And what we witnessed and what we saw on these videos, that these were individuals that were doing these things on their own for whatever reason, okay?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Butcher.
Just real quick, I wanna thank the chair lady for, um, for her leadership because, um, when social media kinda blew up on Sunday morning, uh, my first call was to, uh, to the chief because I wanted to get the facts.
Yes.
And I had seen it on Saturday, but it wasn't quite as much as what we had seen on Sunday. And I talked to Councilman Brooks and immediately though, uh, I think the chairwoman and I had about fifteen conversations that afternoon of a, of a course of action because we want the public to understand this affects us just like it affects you. And it's, it's heartbreaking for me as a father to see, uh, a small, you know, a, a young girl in the street having a seizure and a young man being beaten in the head. It's, it is, it's hard to watch and I've seen a lot of stuff with twenty-some-odd years in public safety, I've seen a lot of stuff. But that was really something to watch. But I wanna thank Councilwoman Taylor for her, for her leadership
You're welcome.
and for, and for putting this together.
Now I have to feed him.
Under what Councilman Butcher said, thank you, uh, for taking the leadership and bringing us together. I'd like to thank the entire council.
Me too.
That we and the mayor and his staff and our staff, that we took the time to come, put aside whatever we had. On Saturday night, um, it went out all over the world that there was fighting in the street. I would just ask that, Mr. Mayor, if you could direct the chief to hold up the traffic for a few minutes, that we would show them that, yeah, we had fighting in the street on Saturday night, but on Tuesday, the men and women of God came together and prayed in those same streets.
Already, already done, pastor?
Yes, sir.
And they're, they're ready?
We're waiting on you.
Yes, sir.
One, one other thing I'd like to say before I take my seat is that I want this entire community down sound, uh, Entertainment District, it sits in a hundred and thirty-seven miles, which we call home, our city limit. Every square inch of it is just as important to me as the other. We're gonna give everybody the best attention that we can throughout our entire city to keep it safe as it can be. So I don't want the rest of our community to think you are forgotten about or neglected
Correct.
because we're focusing extra attention downtown. You're just as important. If you call, we're coming.
That's right. Because these things trickle down to the neighborhoods because you're coming out of your neighborhoods into downtown, which means you will take it back to your neighborhood. So that has to be segmented all the way around. So with that being said, I will leave on this. We are stronger together, for sure, and we create the narrative that we want to see. And typically, we don't have club owners that start fights in the club. We don't want them because we're in the, we want for our stakeholders in the downtown area and, and abroad to be able to make money.
Yes.
Not lose money.
Yes, yes.
Well, no, uh, yeah, that's your twin standing back there. Yeah, that Cedric Glover is James Green's twin. With that being said, this meeting is.
Councilman Green, are we moving to Marshall and Texas?
Yes, sir.